Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call this meeting of the City Council to order on Tuesday, November nineteenth. I will have a roll call. Clerk Meredith.
Mayor Watkins is excused this evening. Vice Mayor Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Eric.
Present.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, if you'll stand and we will do the pledge of allegiance. Councilman Savage, will you lead us, please?
Yes, please. Join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Our invocation will be given tonight by Pastor Tony Henry of Kingman Nazarene Church. Will you all please rise again? I did this out of order, so we can pray.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to pray for you. Heavenly Father, we come before you this afternoon thankful for your presence among us. We thank you for this wonderful country we live in and for the freedoms we still have to come to you in prayer together openly and publicly. We thank you for our wonderful city that we are blessed to be a part of, and we thank you for all of the ways our community comes together to support one another. Help us to always look for ways to encourage our fellow citizens. Father, we thank you for our Kingman City leaders and the heart that they have for our community. Be with them as they conduct business and make decisions that affect all of the citizens of Kingman. Give them wisdom and discernment, insight and clarity. Help them to listen and respond with love for one another and for our city. May all that happens here benefit our community and bring glory to you. And Father, we ask you to be with everyone in our community, especially those who serve others. Keep them safe and healthy through the upcoming holiday seasons. May we all find ways to bless our community. Thank you again for your many blessings in each one of our lives, and it is in the name of Jesus we pray. Thank you, Father.
Thank you. This evening, we will start with awards and recognitions. Manager Walsh, our Fall 2024 Citizens Academy Graduate Recognition.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Happy to announce that we just completed another Citizens Academy. Had some great candidates that, great participants, I guess, that participated and came through, went through all seven sessions, and we'd like to recognize them tonight. We've got a certificate and a shirt to hand out. The clerk will read the participants, and if you'd like to join me on handing those out, we'll do that.
All right, and then if we could have everybody stay, we'll get a picture with council after. Thank you.
All right, first, we have Donna Albright. Mark Berry. Ellen Hartberry. Dawn Bischoff. Dana Boe. Teresa Bogler. Pamela Burgett. Councilmember-elect Jim Dykens. Dennis German. Melissa Holloway. James Jones. Richard LaCombe. Diana.
All right, can you tell us how you want us to stand? You guys wanna come over this way?
I'm a graduate.
Again, again.
Manager Walsh, wanna come down? Find a window.
I'm not blocking anybody.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You are welcome to stay for as long as you like.
Madam Vice Mayor, if I may, there was a question in the audience regarding what the Citizens Academy is.
Sure, absolutely.
If I may, so what the Citizens Academy is, and really should put a candidate on the spot or one of our participants on the spot, right? Let them explain. So what it is, is it's an opportunity. We invite the public to come in. We typically take it around, we try and open it up to around twenty or so. And basically, it's a crash course on all things city. So, seven-week course. We start off with the city administration and finance and kinda go through how those departments operate, and then from there, we go department to department. You meet with the fire department, the police department, public works, engineering.
Everybody.
All of them.
Tourism, economic development.
And you know more than the city manager does about the city operations. So it's really a great opportunity to come and learn what we do as a city. There's always something new. I know there's things that come up that a lot of times we'll hear, oh, we didn't realize the city did that. So it's a great opportunity to learn, and I don't know if you...
Teresa. Would you use the microphone, please?
Could you speak into the mic, please? Thank you.
Well, I was talking to them, not you.
It's for the recording.
You can hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's for the recording, so we have to. Sorry, I apologize.
My PhD in BS comes in real handy at times like this. But I went through this because I wanted to find out what our little community was all about, and I tell you, I was amazed at what Kingman offers. Our police department, our fire department, our parks and rec, just public works. It is amazing what this little community does, and it made me even more proud to be here than I was when I moved here in 2012. So if you get a chance to take this class, it is worth every minute of it. You meet some wonderful people, and our community is amazing.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna move past our presentation on the legislative update. Tom Dorn, our lobbyist, is running a little late, so we're gonna move him after the consent agenda if he's available. So with that being said, call to the public.
Vice Mayor, we don't have anybody that signed up to address council during the call to the public this evening.
Okay, perfect. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Counsel, do we have any items that you wish to remove from the consent agenda? Counselor Ward?
Councilmember Ward, can you please use your microphone? Thank you.
Item O and item G.
All right, removing item O, item G. Counselors, do you have anything else you'd like to remove? All right, I will entertain a motion to approve consent items A through F, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, and P through R.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion? Can I have a second?
Second.
The motion has a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, Counselor Ward, we'll start with item G.
Can you read the description?
Yes, I will. Approve the lease purchase and upfitting six 2025 Chevrolet Tahos and Resolution Number 5538, providing for authorization to enter into a lease purchase and escrow agreement with Zion's Bank Corporation, N.A. This agenda item is requesting the approval to purchase six new automobiles along with the cost for upfitting. The automobiles will be purchased through financing provided by Zion's Bank Corporation, N.A. The cost for the automobiles is $346,299.12, financed at a rate of 4.65% over five years with no prepayment penalty. The total upfitting cost for these automobiles, not included in the lease purchase financing, is $169,129.98. These purchases will be made from the general fund. Staff recommends approval. Counselor Ward.
These two items, the reason I pulled them, we've had several items that have came back to us because either we didn't get the order in on time, or they didn't have the product and we couldn't get it, but it keeps happening. And the reason I pulled this was on the item where the three, I think it's item G. No, it's item O.
Oh.
Where...
But we're only talking about G.
For G, do you have something specific for G? Would you like to hear from Ms. Molly?
Yeah.
Okay.
We ordered these, well, we had a quote in December, and it was for the for the 2024s. And then we have another quote, which is in March, which is saying they can't get the 2024s. We have to go to the 2025s, which cost us more money. And it just keeps happening.
I was just saying, I'm just gonna refer back, though, that's specifically item O, so because we're going in order with G first, so we should discuss G first.
Okay. I had them written down wrong, Carl, thank you. Item G, I just wanted to be sure that those units are available, that we don't end up in the same condition that we're in now, where we get half of them or don't get any of them, and then they come back later at a higher price.
Ms. Molly? Welcome. Thank you very much, Councilman Ward, and if I don't answer this correctly, Jack Plante is behind me, and he'll come up and correct me. But because these are being ordered prior to when the model year typically shifts, as soon as this item gets approved, if it gets approved this evening, we will contact the financing company. They'll issue an approved agreement within a couple of days, and then our fleet department will process that order. So we do not anticipate any issues with delivery of the order that's in front of you this evening.
Okay, I take scare of that.
Thank you. Would you like to make a motion to approve item G, Counselor Ward?
Anyway, on these, like I said, they, we got a quote.
Counselor Ward, would you like to make a motion?
Sure.
Okay, to approve G.
I'll make a motion to approve item G.
Perfect, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on to O.
Item O.
Let me read it before Carl gets after me.
Apparently...
All right, I'm gonna read O first.
Okay.
All right. So approval of changes in pricing for vehicle purchases. On January 16th, 2024, the council approved Resolution 5486, providing authorization to enter into a lease purchase and escrow agreement with ZMFII Two, Inc., for the purchase of ten vehicles. Three model year 24 Ford Explorers were quoted for economic development, development services, and information technology departments within the order. The dealer could not fulfill the MY24 order and place an order for MY25 instead. The increased costs associated with this request are due to the newer model year vehicles. The general fund will be impacted by $5,540.60, and the information technology fund will be impacted by $2,770.29. Staff recommends approval. Counselor Ward.
First of all, did we get the other seven vehicles?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor rather, Council. So the other ones were orders. We have many of those right now that are at the upfitters. And so what ended up happening with these three, we tried to bring packages of vehicles together to minimize the cost for the financing charge. And so when we, by the time we got all those vehicles built, brought those to you guys, got the approval through council, the model year window had closed for the 24. We were unaware that the dealer had ordered the 25s, and then they're actually ready for delivery, and that's when we, the dealer had notified us of the issue. So that's why you see two different quotes. The one we had is what we brought to you guys, which was in December, and then, like I say, by the time we got through the financing and the council approvals, that model year window had closed, and so we ended up with a newer model year. The other seven, most of those, I had actually talked to our fleet manager today, are actually setting it upfitters, getting upfitted and being ready to be delivered to the city.
Okay. Yeah, my only question was, was why we didn't get them ordered when we... Did we not approve it in time, Jack, or did we just not get them ordered?
Yeah, no, we actually, as soon as they were approved, we notified the dealer to go ahead with the orders. So you guys had approved them in that January timeframe. The problem was by the time we got all ten of those vehicle packages together and through the finance piece, we just, we missed the window for the model year 24.
Okay. That's all I got.
Okay, Counselor Savage?
Should we, as a staff up here, move up the contracts as far as earlier in the year so we don't come to that problem?
I don't think there's anything the council needs to do. Sometimes when we're trying to package, especially multiple orders, when we're ordering Tahos or other vehicles, those model year, those order windows open at different times. So there's honestly nothing that council can do for you, for helping that. It's us getting the vehicle packages together and through all the departments and finalize to you guys before those model year changes happen.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Counselor?
Just one. On, as far as getting the orders together sooner, Jack, could we have the, what we need to order before we order it?
We try. Sometimes the problem is you can't get the order sheets from the dealers that gives you all the individual options until they open for that model year. So most of the time, especially as we keep ordering vehicles, we're building out what we call our class code, so we know if we're gonna order a vehicle for this department, this is what it's gonna be. And we're about through, say, a full cycle, and so it's a matter of waiting for them to actually open that order window to where we can actually pick those options, and the dealer can actually build the quote for us. The, like I say, the order timeframe is getting better, but sometimes it's just we can't, we can't process an order until that window has opened up.
Okay. I was just trying to get a better understanding of what was happening.
Yeah, understood. Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Plante?
Hi. I was wondering, are these RFPs? When you're saying you need four Tahos or four Explorers, are these are RFP?
So we've been purchasing off of state contracts, and so it's, study acronyms, we'll reach out to the dealer that has a state contract for whatever model we're looking for, if it's Tahos for PD or Fords for most of the rest of fleet. We'll call them or reach out to them, say, hey, here's the orders, and give them the list of what we're looking for with the options we are after, and then we can go through once we get the base model and pick the remainder of the options. So we're purchasing off of state contract.
Got it. The reason I'm asking is because if, I notice this one's in Gilbert, Arizona, if we had the option to keep that local, so the sales tax would stay local.
Yeah, so the state goes out and does a competitive procurement throughout the state, and so all the dealers in the state have the ability to compete for those, and then it comes down to pricing and discounts that the dealership itself is willing to offer on top of the dealer rebates. And so it is competitively bid at that point.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Jack. Any other questions? All right, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve item O on the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
All right, I have a motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Moving on to old business, item A, Ordinance 1968, adopting business extension zone guidelines. This item is for consideration of Ordinance 1968, which would amend the City of Kingman streets and sidewalks rules and regulations and adopt a business extension zone or BEZ regulation. Council approved the BEZ guidelines on August 20th, 2024. This is a follow-up item for the formal adoption of those guidelines. Approval of Ordinance 1968 will establish a BEZ application process for downtown businesses whose buildings have little or no setback from the city right away. Staff recommends approval. Welcome, Jack.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council. As indicated in the packet, this is the follow-up. You guys have already approved the business extension zone, and just for those that are listening, that is the area in parts of downtown, specifically in much of the revitalized area that where there's a lot of sidewalk to where we can have, allow a business to encroach into that and still maintain ADA access through that area of the business. It allows them some opportunity to use that for outdoor dining or retail space. It's, as it is indicated, an extension of their business, and so to codify that, we made some changes to the street and sidewalk regs, which were attached in the packet for your review, and this is just a formal piece that finalizes that adoption of those regs.
Okay, thank you. Counselors, any questions for Jack? No? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve Ordinance Number 1968.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Onto old business, item B, Resolution Number 5539, establish business extension zone fees. At the September 17th council meeting, the City Council adopted a notice of intent to establish business extension zone fees for downtown businesses that utilize public right-of-way located adjacent to their buildings for the sale of their product or merchandise. Resolution Number 5539, establishing a hundred dollar application fee and a two hundred dollar annual permit fee for the business extension zone program, is being brought before council for their consideration of approval. If approved, the fees will become effective on January 1st, 2025. Staff recommends approval of Resolution Number 5539. Carl? Oh, sorry, Manager Walsh?
Thank you. So as part of the business extension zone guidelines, this is the fees that were proposed. As mentioned, it'd be a hundred dollar application fee and then a two hundred dollar annual permit fee from that, and that basically allows for those businesses to use that sidewalk area for commerce, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions, Counselors? Comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 5539.
We have a motion. I'll have a second.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item C, Ordinance Number 1969, barking dog city code update. The City Council directed staff to update the city code as it relates to barking dogs and the classification of the offense. Staff recommended to reduce the severity of the offensive, of the offense classification. This update will reduce the offense from a class three misdemeanor to a petty offense unless the defendant has already been convicted of the charge within the past 24 months. This charging adjustment was made to dog-at-large and unlicensed dog citations as well. Staff recommends approval.
And that would be me. So if you recall, we had a pretty lengthy discussion regarding barking dogs and the issue of the, at the current ti, or currently, it's a class three misdemeanor, which is probation, you could get jail time, and the discussion between law enforcement, the courts, the council, it just really, we really felt that if we reduce it to a petty offense, it just seems more appropriate that someone doesn't have a criminal conviction because their dog barked or their dog got loose, and that's kind of the background of it, so...
All right, thank you.
Pretty straightforward.
Any questions of Carl?
Yeah, so is this if your dog gets loose, or this is just barking dog?
So this is gonna be barking dog, dog-at-large.
Okay.
As well as unlicensed dog. So and the maximum fine for a petty offense is $300.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 1969.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to item D, Ordinance Number 1970, RV trailer parking city code update. At the August 6th council meeting, staff was directed to update the city code as it relates to RV and trailer parking on public streets. Language was added to the code to ban these types of vehicles and trailers from parking on public streets unless they are immediately unloading or loading. Staff recommends approval. Carl?
That would be me again, and if we recall, we had this pretty lengthy discussion about why we're looking at this, what are the results, what are the issues with enforcement as it currently stands, that it makes it really difficult to enforce the 72-hour requirement. In consultation with PD, obviously with council, we decided what we'd look at doing is making it legal to park on the streets unless you're immediately loading or unloading. I think that's a public safety issue that we've all expressed concern over. I think we'll probably have some heartburn over this in the future, but I think this is an effort worth moving forward with.
All right, thank you. Any comments, questions of Carl?
This is listed in the residential zoning, so the problem is you could be having, you see, people come into town in the commercial areas, they'll have a car with a trailer, and they're parking either by my place, or not by my office, or downtown, or some of these areas. We don't wanna make that necessarily illegal, 'cause then you're trying, then you end up kind of driving those people out of the area. So I think right now, we're just sticking with residential. If you think that this becomes a commercial zoned area problem, and we can obviously work with PD, if that happens to become a problem, then we could address it in the future.
Counselor Ward?
Carl, in the detail of that, it mentions that you have to have the trailer parked behind a block wall. Is that new, or is that existing ordinance?
That, that's all existing. So, what's changing is where you see strikeout and then additional language is bold capital. So, we're not addressing really that parking on, on residential property. This is just parking on the street in residential neighborhoods. So, that other part exists. We're just altering the parking on the street portion.
Okay.
Okay. Counselor Staley? All right. I'll entertain a motion on ordinance number 1970.
So moved.
Is that a motion to approve? I'm sorry, it wasn't clear on that. Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Uh, new business, item A, parking lot lease at the northeast corner of Andy Devine Avenue and Third Street. Staff has received multiple inquiries regarding the lease of the city-owned parking, uh, lot at the northeast corner of Andy Devine Avenue and Third Street. At council's request, this item is being brought forth for discussion and possible action. Council direction. Uh, Manager Walsh?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, this item, a, a number of, uh, council members have inquired regarding the lease for the parking lot on the, let's see, the northeast corner of Third and Andy Devine. Um, currently, the city has leased that property and that lease began September 1st, 2018. Um, it was a 20-year lease, so it goes through August, uh, 31st of 2038. The, that lease is with, uh, Fleishman, uh, let's see, get the right actual, I'm trying to find the actual person here. Thank you. Yeah, Fleishman AZ Investment Corporation, who owns the Brunswick, uh, a- and that, that area there. So, um, there is some concern, I, I think, regarding the area due to, um, the number of events that are being held, you know, downtown, the, the interest in downtown, uh, being able to provide that parking. Uh, the city does own the, the property. We have leased it to, uh, Fleishman Investments. So, I, I believe some of the concerns are that, um, because the, the Fleishman Investment Group has control over that, they could restrict what parking is allowed in that. Um, the, the theater that's being renovated is right around the corner. Um, so definitely there will be some parking, um, impacts once that comes online. Uh, not to mention, you know, the number of First Fridays that we, we have, uh, on Beale Street and, and other events that are occurring downtown. So, the, the question I, I believe is, do we want to continue with this lease? Uh, or is this something that we'd, we'd like to maybe, uh, back out of? Um, just for councils, um, for your, for your, uh, to make you aware, there are, um, termination conditions. Um, basically, either one has the right to terminate, however, it requires a notification of 12 months prior to that termination. Um, but be happy to answer any questions and I'll have Lena and Carl to, to answer the legal questions.
All right. Counselor Savage?
I have two questions on, Jack. I don't know if you're going to know this. Is there renovation plans for the Brunswick at this moment that you know of?
None that I'm aware of, but I don't know that I'm the best person to ask that question. Um, I know they, they were working on some facade grants and things, but, um, none that I'm aware of at the moment.
And then, how many parking spots are on that lot?
I think there's eight, eight in total, maybe 10.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Savage. Anybody else? Counselor Eric?
Is there any financial penalties for breaking that lease? No? And would there have to be any renovations or updates to the asphalt itself?
The, when the, the tenant is supposed to maintain in normal operating, uh, condition, how you'd have to be maintained for a normal parking lot. And when it's returned, it needs to be returned as in a similar condition to when we turn it over to them. Uh, would I say that that was documented and photographed exactly what it looked like when we, when we leased it out? I, I would have my doubts. I don't know. But, but, uh, yes, that we would expect it to be in a normal operating condition.
Any other questions? Counselors daily?
Um, I was looking at it. It looks like it has not had any maintenance to the, uh, asphalt since they took it over. It, it's pretty rough. It, it needs at least some kind of treatment. I'm sure we could refer to Jack. But it just looks like you're down to the aggregate. Are they also, um, responsible for maintenance on all the landscaping and keeping it clean? Because that also does not look like it's been touched. It's pretty wild over there.
I would make an argument that, yeah, they probably should be responsible for whatever is encompassed in that property and without.
So, regular maintenance to keep it in tip-top shape so we get it back.
Correct.
The way it looked when we rented it out.
Correct.
Okay. So, that doesn't seem to be happening. Just, that's my observation.
Any other questions, comments? Um, Counselor Savage asked one of my questions. I wanted to know how many spots, if we were to notice and terminate the lease, we're going to gain eight spots back. So, um, my other question is, has there been a problem with access? Has, has the Fleishman Group restricted parking? Can you tell me what that looks like?
None to my knowledge. I, I think there was, there may have been at one, on one occasion in this parking lot. I, I think there may have been an occasion where at a first Friday, a- and this is secondhand that I'm hearing this. So, I, I don't know this for sure, but my understanding is that maybe at a first Friday event, one of the blockades for Third Street might have been removed to allow access to the parking lot. So, that may have been a, you know, that, that could have been an issue as far as parking and, and that. But as far as, uh, restricting parking, I'm not aware of any specific incidents where, uh, access has not been allowed to that parking lot.
Okay. I just, I'm, I'm just curious why we would be taking action. And, and if there is, to your point, Counselor Staley, um, signs up or barricades have been moved, you know, have we had communication with them to, to try to rectify the situation? And I mean, uh, we can cancel this lease a year in advance, correct? So, I don't know. I, I'm leaning like, I'm leaning towards let it be and let's, let's communicate with the, the company that has it. Unless it becomes an issue, then I don't, I don't see where the action is that we should take, you know, causes us to take to terminate the agreement. So, that's just my comments.
Can I kind of tag on to that?
Sure.
Just for clarity, is it, so it's a hundred bucks a month for the first five years and then 50 bucks a month after that, right? So, at this point, one year of rent is 600 bucks? Right? Okay. So, just putting that out there.
Counselor Savage?
My concern is with the growth and what we've done to downtown, um, will those lots be better served for the public to be able to use them and spend more money down there?
Well, I mean, I guess that would be my argument is, are they prohibiting us? Are they prohibiting the public from using it to a point to where it's necessary that we take it back? So, um, you know, that, that would be my comment. I would say if there is anyone that wants to speak on this item.
I, I got something quick to say.
Oh.
I, I think, I, I believe it'd be in the city's best interest to take it back. I think we got to give them a year notice. We've spent a lot of money downtown. The theater's getting ready to do a bunch of work and I don't want to see an issue with them. Apparently, there is signs saying it's for those businesses. For 50 bucks a month, it's not worth us having the headache, i- is my opinion.
Okay. Good comment. Annie, if we have a member of the public that wants to speak? We definitely want to give you an opportunity.
Uh, while we're waiting, can I ask one more question?
Sure. Counselor Staley?
Carl, the $50 a month, is there any concern that that isn't, uh, today's market rate for renting a lot that size? Because it seems like, um, we, we've talked before, you've warned us about the gift clause and, and not being at, you know, the rate that someone would normally pay.
Right.
I can't imagine $50 covers.
Yeah. I have no idea what the going rate would be. I just recall when we went through this process, uh, Fleishman was in the process of kind of upgrading the Brunswick. He was looking at making, I, I think some either hotel, short stay or like, uh, temporary office work. So, that's why he was trying to get commitment for these parking spaces. So, I think when the council made that, uh, adopted this particular agreement at this rate, it was with the hope of, you know, promoting that economic development, giving, getting that building pushed forward and occupied at the time. I think that's the reason why we settled at that rate.
Are you worried about it being so low?
Uh, I don't know what the official ri- what it should be. I'm by no means an expert, so without checking, uh, again, sometimes when you're looking at those rates, uh, I don't want to say, unless someone challenges it, uh, and someone could challenge and say, we are subsidizing this private business. But, you know, there's other opportunities where we sometimes subsidize private businesses, like an item that we just did earlier today for expanding business operations in the sidewalk. So, it's sometimes you just kind of do this give and take, looking to see what kind of benefit you're adding, making sure you're getting something that seems to be a good positive return to the community. And, and that, oh, basically, you're looking at the overall benefit, trying to look at some direct benefits, I suppose, intangible benefits. But it could be a question.
Okay.
But again, without knowing what those numbers are, I can't make that determination.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
Hi. My name is Steve Smith. I am a member of the Board of Directors for Fleishman Arizona Corporation. And this is the first anybody's heard about a question regarding the lease. Uh, we'd be more than happy to discuss it. And, uh, you're correct, the whole point of releasing that property at the time, number of years ago, we were in the, in the renovation process. We've pretty much stopped that at this point in time, but there are shops and, and, and entities in, in the building that we would like to have that property, uh, reserved for should we need it. We have never closed it down. There's never been an instance where we've had that closed down, Vern put the sign up just because we thought at some point in time we might want to. And we're very open in working with the city. There's no problem with that. But if you want to, I just wrote, Vern, this afternoon, and if you want to get something going, let's, let's talk first.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Pennington?
Yes. Travon Pennington, 2247 Mesa Drive. I had a firsthand experience related to this site. When we were renovate, we're currently renovating the Beal, uh, Beal Street Theater right behind this. And we were doing utility work in the alleyway. And I met probably half a dozen, um, utility, various subcontractors. And I believe me and Kealan parked in this parking lot and I parked in this parking lot and maybe, um, Bob Friday, right? So, there was three cars there. It was seven o'clock in the morning. It was empty other than our cars. And there was a employee of the leaseholder came out and was v- extremely hostile. And basically kicked us off that property, asked us, included quite a bit of adjectives about how we could read or not read and pointed to the sign. So, just facts prevail, right? There has been instances where they have kicked people off of that property. I don't know that Kealan's here, but he's my backup on this story. So, I just thought it was relevant to bring this to your attention.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments, questions?
Vice Mayor, if I may, just, this, if, if council were to choose to revoke the lease or terminate the lease, um, that would not prevent Fleishman from being able to use the, the, the parking lot. It would allow for others to be able to use it as well. So, just, just wanted to bring that up.
Okay. I guess, what is council's pleasure?
I say we table it for right now and have further discussions.
Is that a motion?
I make a motion for that.
I would second that. We have a motion and a second to table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion to table approved. Moving on to new business, item B, amendment to AECOM professional service contract for Rancho Santa Fe Parkway Phase Two. AECOM Technical Services Incorporated designed the Rancho Santa Fe Parkway traffic interchange and is designing the Rancho Santa Fe Parkway and Airway Avenue road extensions from the traffic interchange to Prospector Phase Two. The initial design incorporated the drainage detention basin proposed by KDP managers. With the cancellation of the development agreement with KDP managers, the city approved a design change order of $181,536 to redesign the roadway without the detention basin. Concurrently, the county completed a FEMA drainage study of the area, which identified additional flows impacting the site. Additional modeling is needed to order, in order to ensure adequate facilities to allow stormwater under the roadway. AECOM is requesting an additional $80,046 to perform the needed additional hydraulic, hydro- hydrologic, hydroge- oh, my goodness, hydrologic modeling. Funding will be appro- provided from the I-11 East Kingman Connection Project Fund. Staff recommends approval. Mr. Garmon?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members. I think one thing that's important to point out here is that this additional money really depends, whether it's spent or not, is depends on whether or not KDP is going to participate in the project. Uh, if they build their retention pond, then there's no need to do this modeling. Um, if they're not going to participate, then there's going to be additional flow coming to the Parkway that's not a currently accounted for in AECOM's design. So, um, I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Counselor Staley?
Yeah. I, um, I've been talking to Manager Walsh today about, um, this additional expense and what I think is our third redesign, but maybe second. We're some, we've done this a few times. Um, I, what we have discovered is that we have some leeway, about five months of leeway in this design process from when we need to start building. And, um, I would like to table this item so that we could sit down and talk to the developer and look to see, um, where they're at, what their timeline looks like and what their plans are to capture that water above Rancho Santa Fe, which would allow, if they are able to participate in time, that would allow us to save, uh, the redesign costs. It would also likely, um, allow us to save the, um, additional construction costs because likely we'd have to beef up the culverts, right? And so, um, if we could just take until about the beginning of January sometime, um, to see how this finally shakes out and meet with the developers, then it would be worth it if it's a chance to save potentially this amount plus maybe a million dollars for big culverts, whatever those cost these days.
Any other comments? I actually support that. I was going to make that recommendation myself because I think that the timing of it all is going to fall in line, um, with some other things that we know. And so, um, I feel that it's very appropriate for, um, I would, I would support that if you would make a motion. Anybody else?
Okay. Vice Mayor, if I may, just, just one, one thing to bring up in my, uh, conversations with AECOM right now. So, a- as you'll see in this item, um, council approved a change order for 180,000. And that was to take the, um, the, the previous plan and go, how do we do that? To your point, we've had a few revisions here. Um, so, there was a plan that was completed with the partnership with KDP managers and them having a retention basing, decreasing that flow. Um, with that agreement being terminated and, and the city going at it, um, alone, uh, this change order of 181,000 was approved in order to redesign those plans to allow for that, that larger flow to go through there. Um, KD, or KDP manager, AECOM has been working on those plans. Some, you know, they, they've started that construction, or started that, the design, not the construction. And in that design, they found, um, the county had done some additional, uh, drainage, which is the 80,000 is to incorporate what the county had found during their, uh, FEMA floodplain studies. Um, at this point, if, if it is council's wish to hold off, I would suggest that we ask AECOM to put a pause on their redesign because if we do believe that, uh, we may have a, a partner going i- in the future and that those, those flows will be decreased in the future, this current redesign that we're spending money on would, would not be needed. So, I could reach out to AECOM, I, I, and I actually mentioned this to their engineer that, hey, we could pause this. You know, depending on how it goes tonight, we could pause this. Once we know, we could pick back up in January. Um, just some additional information for council. Working backwards, um, we have the Rancho Santa Fe Interchange starting December 2nd. Um, that is anticipated to be an 18-month project to, from, from start to completion. So, that puts us about July 2nd. That is anticipated to be an eighteen-month project to, from, from start to completion. So that puts us about July of twenty twenty-six. Talking with AECom's engineers. They anticipate that the construction of Rancho Santa Fe Parkway from the interchange to airway. And then airway from Rancho Santa Fe to Prospector, they anticipate that construction to take anywhere six to nine months. So if you figure six to nine months, go on the, you know, the conservative side, nine months. Looking at a conservative estimate for our bidding that project, you're probably looking four months, you know, to, to put it on the street, evaluate it, bring it to council, get it approved. Four months. So you're, you're at thirteen months there. I believe AECom is probably about two to three months out to complete the, the design. So working backwards, we've got. About fifteen months, I think, if my math is, is adding up. So we, we have about three months to play with before we have to, you know, really start making that decision. So. That three months would allow us to see how the, the other things shake out with, with KDP managers and, and if we do have opportunity to not have to redesign. So just wanted to put that out there. If it's council's direction, I, I will reach out to AECom and have them pause until we know, we know more.
Any other questions, comments? All right.
I will make a motion to table this amendment to the AECom Professional Services Contract.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion to table carries. On to item C. Approval of CMAR GMP for Santa Rosa Transmission Line. At their February twentieth, twenty twenty-four regularly scheduled meeting, council approved the construction manager at risk. With BNF constructing, contracting for the Santa Rosa Transmission Line. Pre-construction services are now complete and based on the plans prepared by Sunrise Engineering dated September third, twenty twenty-four, a guaranteed maximum price of seven point. One million five hundred and twenty-one thou, five hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-eight cents has been approved, has been provided. The project will include the installation of an estimated one thousand eight hundred and eighty-three feet of sixteen-inch ductile iron. Water main and appetites allowing for additional water supply from the west side of Route sixty-six to the east side, improving water supply and pressure. This project was approved in the fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five adopted budget and five-year capital improvement plan fiscal year twenty-five twenty-nine. At a budgeted amount of eight point four five three million. This project will be financed with financing documents brought to council for consideration and approval in late February, early March, twenty twenty-five. Staff recommends approval. Welcome back.
Vice Mayor, council members. This is a project basically to bring water from the west side of Kingman to the east side of Kingman. And button up some water supply issues we have over on the east side where we've got a. A booster pump that's on private property and that kind of thing. Once this project's completed, we can get rid of all that extra equipment and we'll have. A redundant source of water from the west side to the east side to help, as, to help us support the system as Kingman grows in that area. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll motion for approval.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, we're going to call up Mr. Tom Dorn to give us the legislative update. This was item two A. Welcome, Mr. Dorn.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, council members. Nice to see all of you. Sorry, I was running a little behind up the hill here. Thank you for squeezing me in for the, just an update on where things are now down at the state capitol, that we've had some interesting changes and. And so I tried not to regurgitate everything you already know from the press and those you've already talked to, but just kind of give you a little bit of. Background on things that happened down in the hallways and some of the conversations to give you a little more context and perspective of where, where we are right now. As you know, the, the election happened and it went relatively smoothly. The Senate ended up. You need to know, going into this, everybody, I mean, the Democrats fully had the curtains measured for the leadership offices. In the Senate and the House and. And that was common belief. We thought for the first time since the sixties, the House was going to flip to the Democrats. And first time since two thousand where we would have a split Senate where it was fifteen fifteen back then. And so the questions before the election were who's going to break, you know, which Democrat or which Republican was going to go sell out on their caucus? And go run over to the other caucus and say, make me president and I'll make you all the chairs. We all had our money down on who we thought that would have been, but it didn't happen. And so we ended up, and to a surprise. There were some people, the, the Democrats, I mean, it was just part of the national wave, you know. The coattails were very long and they reached down into the legislature here at our state and probably other states. But some senators were, were knocked off. And we actually had a situation where a, a more conservative Republican lost in the primary. And that person actually went out of his or her way to go after the, the Republican nominee because he or she was not. The ilk that they would have wanted. And so fortunately for the Republicans, that Republicans still won. And so it, the, the politics within the parties is just as crazy to watch as the cut politics between the two. And so we ended up with seventeen thirteen. And because of that, certain things that fell a certain way, Senator David Gowen was trying to make a run as Senate President. He's a Republican from Sierra Vista. You may remember him when he was the Speaker of the House several years ago. And, but Senator Warren Peterson, the current Senate President, he held on. Because the way certain things flipped, mainly a district in Phoenix, Christine Marsh lost to Corinne Warner in the Paradise Valley Scottsdale area. So that solidified Peterson coming back. The majority leader in the Senate is no longer Sonny, Sonny Varelli. It is now just a Janey Champ. She's from the West Valley, the West Valley in Phoenix. And then the Senate whip is Frank Carroll. He's from Peoria. You all may know Frank Carroll from working with him. He was the Transportation Chair. We've done a lot of work with him on transportation projects over the years. Senator TJ Shope will, he's from Pinal County, Coolidge. He's going to remain the Speaker pro temp in the Senate. I mean, the President pro temp, which means when the President isn't in the chair, he's in the chair. And it's a very powerful position. And he, but he also is going to be the Chairman of the Water Committee, the Natural Resources Committee. And this is important for all of us here in Mojave County in the city of Kingman. Because his big interest is, last year there was a bill, eleven seventy-two, if you remember that, that was the Agda Urban. Where agricultural interests want to convert their land into housing or other projects, data centers, Pinal County. Manufacturing. And they want to, and, and in this is the woven, the whole idea of. Do we really need a hundred-year water supply for development? What about seventy-five? What about less? So woven in all of that is that issue. I'm not saying he or anyone else down there advocates for that right now, but that is in there. So it's going to, the water wars will be with us always, just like education funding is never enough. We'll always have the water wars. And they're just taking a different turn based on who's in charge. So that's Shope over, and now over to the House. You know, we were all hoping personally, I mean, I, I really was hoping for Leo Biassucci from our House. One of our members to be Speaker. Steve Montenegro ended up being the Speaker. He's a good guy. He's a good guy. And he'll do fine as the Speaker of the House. But on behalf of the city of Kingman. Definitely it would have been great to have Leo Biassucci become the Speaker of the House. He was in a three-way battle and everyone thought he was the leader. He was, it was his to lose. And I think because of some of more conservative surprise members jumped in, I mean, one. In thirty-three twenty-seven, the Republican control went from thirty-one twenty-nine to thirty-three twenty-seven. And some of those pickups were more of the conserve, the, the, the right, far right side of the caucus. So they got behind Joseph Chaplik of Scottsdale, who's one of the chairs of the Freedom Caucus in the House. And so where it really looked at like Biassucci versus Montenegro and Chaplik was the third guy out. All of a sudden, he surged up and Leo became the third one out. And it became between Montenegro and Chaplik and a lot of people threw their support behind Montenegro. Because they possibly, some of the more moderate, if we have any moderates left in the Republican caucus. The, maybe not Freedom Caucus members, they wanted Montenegro instead of Chaplik. So. That's what happened. That's the drama behind why Leo is not Speaker Leo right now. And, but, you know, we have a great relationship with everybody down there, so including Montenegro. So we're, we're in good shape. The thing is, he's from Litchfield Park, so you got more people from the West Valley. West Valley really picked up. The Litchfield Park, Peoria, Buckeye, Michael Carbone is the Majority Leader in the House. He's from Buckeye. Julie Willoughby, the new whip for the, for the House is from Chandler. So you really don't have the. We used to have more, the last legislature had more, more rural legislators. I mean, we had Sonny and Leo and. And you had more rural legislators in leadership. Now it's not even Tucson. It's mainly Maricopa County. Legislators that are the leaders. And so. That's a little different. In those dynamics, that's when the, the rural parts of the state need to come together and work together and stick together. And fortunately, we have Governor Hobbs, who's been a, a backer and supporter of the rural, especially on the water issues. Real quick, Mr. Biassucci ended up with transportation and infrastructure, which is a good thing, and especially as you're talking about everything at the. At Rancho Santa Fe and airway and everything at, at the airport and elsewhere. And it'll be good to have. The Chairman of the Transportation Committee is our legislator. And then John Gillette, he got the federalism, military affairs and elections. So he'll be busy with several bills and he's the Chair of that committee. So happy for him and that's a good thing. Hilda Angus, she ended up the Vice Chair of two committees and, and that's good. So she's with the Committee on Public Safety. And it's interesting, I think that'll probably end up being, we're trying to get transportation added. For the first time ever, we don't have a transportation committee. And I think that was the President kind of smacking the business community for the tax in Maricopa County. But anyway, so hopefully she'll be dealing with transportation issues on the Public Safety Committee. And then she also is the Committee on Federalism. So the Senate took a right turn. We're going, we have a committee on the border, we got a committee on the military, we have a committee on elections integrity. We got federalism, but we don't have a Commerce Committee and we don't have a Transportation Committee. So we kind of see where the priorities are going to be. Anyway, with regard to the, the priorities of session, just wanted to, and this is it, I just wanted to let you know the budget will continue. It's interesting, the revenues have been up and then the revenues are down, and the revenues are up and then they're down. So it's going to be interesting to see what happens. A lot of this is. As we've talked about before. The ESAs, the Education Sp, uh, scholarships, that's, depending who you talk to, you know, your perspective. The governor will say that's been a drain on general revenue funds, you know, up to like eight hundred million dollars. The Republicans and the pro-school choice people will say, well, that's eight hundred million dollars that should, you know, we just saved. These kids are outside of the school. They would have been more expensive if they were still in the district school. So that's who you believe. So that issue is driving some shortfalls per the governor. Also, the, the reduction of our, of our, you know, we now have a two-point-five percent flat tax, as you all know. Well, when that was put in as second, it's the lowest flat tax, North Dakota and Arizona have the second lowest, have the lowest flat taxes in the country. And that, the implementation of that, we knew the revenues are going to dip really low until FY twenty-seven. So that's next year. So that would be the next year when revenue should start to come back. And so that's part of our shortfall and that'll continue. And that combined with what was done to the rental tax for the communities, for the cities and towns. We know all cities, including Kingman, you know, we've been talking about how revenue replacement, thank God we got that eighteen percent in that negotiation. Because that is a better, that's a win on the long haul. But revenues for cities is going to be another issue. In making sure that nothing gets passed on to the cities. And, and like I said, that's where the governor has at the back there. Another one, Proposition one, two, three. If you recall, remember, okay, the state trust is, you know, what helps fund education. Well, Governor Ducey, several years ago, as a result to a lawsuit, said, how about if we go take some of the money from the state trust? Skim a little off it and put it into the school districts. And that was voted on. And remember Jeff DeWitt, who, when he was this treasurer and he said, oh no. You shouldn't be messing with the school trust. And he fought it. Well, it prevailed at the ballot and that is going to expire. And so in the legislature either has to, because it was voted protected, the legislature is going to have to get three-quarters of the legislature to extend it. To continue to use this money off, this little side off the trust for schools or it goes away. But you also, instead of just simply quietly extending it like they did on the other education thing, three oh one, a few years back. They, there's FIDO, oh no, let's increase it. The governor wants to increase it. More off the trust to go to schools now. And so she's going to be pushing for that. Okay, if you want, if you people want to keep ESAs, then, then let's talk about giving more off the trust. And so who's going to fight? So that is going to be a big thing and how, how it affects the cities is going to be seen whether, I don't know, other than the general fund impact. I think. But that'll be a big issue we'll all be hearing about. Water, of course, will continue to be, I already mentioned a little bit about the Agda Urban. But we, we got to make sure that, you know, the rurals, we all need to stick together. Because they're, they're coming at us. And one last thing, short-term rentals, that's really percolating, that's water, is bubbling up again as just such a problem. And the housing issue certainly hasn't gone away. Happy to answer any questions, but just, I think that's kind of an overview of the election, the politics behind it and some of the upcoming issues. So. Be happy to answer any questions.
Counselors, any questions? No, comment?
Of course, water is our biggest priority. But if you are able to advocate for some funding for Kingman, for transportation and infrastructure, of course. We are in need and would love for our tax dollars to come back to Kingman to support those projects. You already do that, but I just wanted to say it again.
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor, Councilwoman Staley, yes. And one thing I want to remind you all, GADA, the Greater Arizona Development Authority, is back. And that is an application process through, I don't know if it runs through the Arizona Commerce Authority, but Governor Hobbs has brought it back. And that's where we can pursue funding in a competitive process for, you know, economic development. Projects or, or transportation. So of course, there's always going to be the, the fight on specific projects if, if they even go there again. I think legislators will continue. And I know Mr. Gillette will probably introduce those same issues unless we have different ones now. But, yeah, there, I think GADA is something for us to pursue and there's other project, other like the ESP program, the Economic Strengths Project Fund. I think we need to really make sure in WIFA, make sure we're pursuing all the programs that are already in place. Where the legislature is trying to restore the funding to them and make sure we're aggressively applying and advocating to get those awards. I think that's, to answer your question, I think that's, let's do that because I actually had a breakfast meeting today with. House Senate Appropriations Chair, John Kavanaugh, who someone brought up the idea, well, we need funding for this. He's like, well, good luck with that. You know, so that was the Senate Appropriations Chair making a comment, you know, eight hours ago to that effect. But he's like that all the time. So.
Thank you. Counselor Eric?
Hi.
Yes, sir.
Quick question. So you mentioned how a lot of the new faces in the bigger roles are from the valley and from around, you know. Maricopa County. You said. The rural cities have to stick together and then also. Governor Hobbs is one of our biggest allies in this fight to protect rural, rural amenities, basically. Is there a, a group for, or a lobbying group for rules besides, I mean, can you just explain, just so everyone can kind of know? I know that there's a league, right? But is there anything else that allows us to create a, a block, a void? Um, but is there anything else that allows us to create a a block, a voice for rural communities?
Yes, yeah, uh, Madam Vice Mayor, Councilman Eric, uh, yes, there's the League of Cities, the County Supervisors Association, so all five of our supervisors um are the boss of the whole association, you know, they, they, so the, and CSA does a great job being the voice of the fifteen counties. And then the league is very much dispersed, it's not just Phoenix, it's very much, they do their best to represent all cities. And then you have, you know, all of your professional people really need to be involved in their state associations, whether it's the Arizona Association for Economic Development, uh, uh, the Arizona Planning Association, um, government office, you know, finance, divi- finance, finance directors, just all of those state associations of your employees, the people that work for the city, that that's critically important because when rural voices speak up in those groups, it has a uh, you punch above your weight, you know, in 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 the policy discussions.
Thank you, Mr. Don, I appreciate you and everything you do.
And 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 also, uh, Becky, I mean, your chamber is, the Kingman Chamber is excellent and and I know she, she is a leader in the um, you know, the chamber statewide chamber ace, the Arizona Chamber Executives and well-respected, so that they're, they're, they do well to complement what the Arizona Chamber does, so.
Any other comments, questions? I just had a question, um, what is the appetite in uh, the leadership to be on rural groundwater um legisla-, are we, are we going to be hearing thing, hearing bills, are they going to get out of committee?
You know, um,
Get out your crystal ball.
Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, as you all know, the November twenty second, uh, uh, the Department of Water Resources having a meeting in, on the Wilcox Active Management Area, AMA. And so, you know, the governor, she said last time, you know, if you, the legislature, don't um do something on on groundwater, I will. You know, she didn't like what Senator Seena Kerr and Representative Gail Griffin is the two leaders in the House and the Senate wanted to do. Um, we did not like what they wanted to do as the city of Kingman. Um, and that's where in most of the rural Arizona did not like what they wanted to do, because what they were doing was really helping the home builders and developers and cattlemen and ranchers and Farm Bureau and all that. Not that we don't want to help them, but it 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 would hurt rural communities in your future economic development. And so it was a stalemate. But the governor, month or so back, said, okay, well, you didn't do what I asked and so I'm going to, I'm going to do what I can with the law, the current law, and start active management areas. And one of them was Wilcox, where Gail Griffin is from, she's from Sierra Vista and that's, I mean, that's her district. So that was a shot across the bow. And then uh, and out there last year was the whole idea of an active management area in Gila Bend area and which was Senator Seena Kerr's district, being from Buckeye and her family being a dairy farm. Um, and so uh, the 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 battle is still set, it's the same now, the leadership is going to be, you got West Valley and East Valley and Shope with Pinal County. Um, Tim Dunn, he's the Vice Chair of Natural Resources, but he's from Yuma. Yeah, but he also represents the Buckeye area, so Yuma at least gets their water off the river for, you know, priority. But so you have these blended interests, you got agriculture that wants to hold on to what they've got in Buckeye area, but you also have developers and home builders and all of that. And you got the same thing in Pinal County. And so it's just going to be another cluster again, to be, to use a professional term. Um, it it's going to be another big battle and the governor has already said, this is, well, the route I'm going to take right now. Uh, so hopefully cooler heads, but keep in mind, the governor has already shown that she's trying to move to the middle with the twenty twenty six election already starting. And so she's trying to move to the middle on certain things. So it'll be interesting to see how closely she works with President Peterson and Speaker Montenegro on the east side and the west side respectively, trying to deal with those, you know, they got to grow stucco in both sides, that's their plan.
All right, and then the last thing, I just have a comment, I just want, I know you, I know you do this, but I want to plant the seed again and again and again. Please let us be as proactive as possible, stay ahead of things, please work with staff and the mayor, myself, council, you know, if we need to make trips down there, but let's, let's have a presence down there. Um, and I think it's very important and we don't, we don't want to be the last one at the table.
Well, Madam Vice Mayor, uh, I think, as we discussed previously, I think we need to do what Yuma's always done, uh, over the years, they, their entire council comes down for Yuma Day and let's start a King, First Annual Kingman Day, you know?
That's a great idea.
Bring the, maybe the Chamber Board of Directors, the council, and maybe the supervisors even join, you know, but come to the legislature and we can set up some meetings and and speakers and just have that, because you've been, you and others have been saying that for quite a while, so let's go do it and and uh, First Annual Kingman Day.
All right. Staff?
Maybe set it around baseball.
Will you, will you work with Tom on that? Thank you. All right, thank you again and thanks for the, making the trip up, we appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Very much, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Happy Thanksgiving.
You. All right, item D, public hearing ordinance number nineteen seventy one, Z O two four dash zero 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 two zoning ordinance amendment. Staff initiated application in accordance with section two dash fifty of the City of Kingman zoning code to amend the city zoning code originally adopted on April sixth, twenty twenty one. The subject amendment, the subject amendment, amendment facilities, a comprehensive cleanup to titles one through five addressing Scrivener's errors while further clarifying and defining procedures and authority as prescribed in section one, one dash thirty, authority section two dash thirty, common procedures in section two dash forty, permits and approvals while expanding and clarifying allowable uses and development standards affecting section three dash twenty through three dash forty allowable land uses and development standards and section five dash twenty definitions. Staff recommends approval. Welcome, Jason.
I'm mouthful. Thank you. Vice Mayor Somali, Council, appreciate the opportunity to present this for you tonight. Uh, as discussed in the description, this is a comprehensive cleanup to our current cities, City of Kingman zoning code. Uh, this is probably one of several that will come before you as we continue to work through the code, look at for opportunities to improve it. But uh, this is a comp- compilation of various items that we've taken into consideration, we've looked at over the last uh, several years that it's been being implemented and we have some recommendations before you this evening. So again, this is a city application, I won't read the requested action, that's already been a bit given, but uh, the staff recommendation is based on the findings in our staff report, uh, the text amendments and that of the Planning and Zoning Commission, we are recommending approval this evening. Just a little bit of background, this particular, uh, the city zoning code was first established June fourteenth, nineteen seventy one, that it was re-adopted May seventh, two thousand and one, and the current ordinance that is in fit, in place, ordinance nineteen twenty four, nineteen twenty four, was adopted and implemented on April sixth, twenty twenty one, and that's the code that we currently are using for all of our development standards when we're directing development, whether it's in our commercial or residential areas. The purpose of tonight's amendment really is to address multiple Scrivener's errors, it's also to update the code to reflect the establishment of the Development Services Department and remove the references of the Kingman Fire Department and Fire Chief from the code as they were the previous overseeing department for development services, add clarity and update definitions, amend various development standards, uh, which were inconclusive or missing and minor updates to development standards and process that were onerous or impeding development. In my presentation tonight, I'm going to go over three main points uh, as part of the presentation, then I'll highly cover uh, various other elements that are being amended. Um, but the very first one that I want to bring to your attention is repealing uh, the code section two dash thirty dash zero six zero, this is the citizen view process. Currently, uh, as we analyze this, the, currently the, the ordinance requires that the developer go out and hold two meetings with the community and this is really to obtain feedback from the community, well in advance of them, you know, moving forward with their subdivision. Uh, it does not take the place of a public hearing, those are still required by Arizona State, uh, Arizona State revised statutes. But as stated, we would allow still for the public hearings, it would just remove the requirement that they hold two uh, community meetings in advance. Uh, historically, from my experience, also looking at and talking with others, uh, we've had historically low turnouts at these particular meetings, they remain fairly ineffective. Uh, it adds delay uh, to the development process, process, it impacts their approval timelines and the ability to bring a project to fruition or to the market in a timely manner. What this amendment doesn't do is it does not stop the developer from actually holding an outreach proactively, so you know, through communication with the developer, through communication with the community, they can still hold that outreach out uh, proactively on their, on their own, uh, however, it just would remove it as a requirement from our code. The second item before you is conditional use permits, uh, conditional use permits, this amends code section two dash four dash zero four zero, which amends the approval authority of a conditional use permit at the direction of the council. Uh, this particular direction is coming back for you. When we adopted the code in twenty twenty one, it established the approval body as the Planning Commission, uh, with the appeal body being that of the city council. What this does is it actually brings the recommending body back to the Planning Commission and the approval body back to the city council, and that would be for any conditional use permits. Also recommended in this particular item uh, of change is to grant the director the ability to administratively approve an extension of time. Currently, the code does require that that come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission uh, for an extension. However, what we find is uh, as developers are working through their process, they are trying to attain materials, get their permits ready, sometimes they just run out of time and and bringing them back for another discretionary review for an extension after they've already gone through the process or are actively involved in their permitting process, it just adds additional time. So the other aspect of this, by revising the conditional use permits is it does allow for them to be processed concurrently with any rezones. If there's an application that's coming before you that requires a rezone for commercial purposes for a specific use, it would allow them to also process that concurrently with the CUP. It'd be able to go to the same hearing as that of the the city council as opposed to having it on a separate meeting and further delaying the development process. It does add the additional layer of discretionary review as it does come again, still to the Planning Commission as a, as a recommending body and then back before the council for approval, allows concurrent processing, as I discussed, rezones, site plans, and eliminates the need for further discretionary review when it's just an extension of time. One of the other changes that we're looking at this evening, amends code section two dash four dot point one three zero, uh, which requires a site plan review currently for accessory structures under two hundred square feet in area and patio covers. We found that these can actually be reviewed administratively through the building permit process. This takes away and actually again, uh, streamlines the permitting process. So this eliminates any formal review through the planning and zoning process when they're under two hundred square feet. Uh, same thing with patio covers and we would review it through the building permit process, creates a consistency with the building code and reduces redundant reviews. So now I'm going to kind of get into just a real quick overview of some of the changes uh, that are addressed throughout the entire document, again, Scrivener's errors, but also we're addressing setbacks for attached dwelling units. Currently, uh, the code is silent, it's missing the actual setback requirements, so as part of the code amendment, we'll be implementing those setbacks. It does clarify daycare centers versus daycare homes when in a residential zone or versus a commercial zone. Amends tables three dash twenty uh, B and three dash twenty or thirty A with respect to missing development standards. Currently, there are no development standards when it comes to the density caps that would be allowed for any type of multifamily residential and our commercial designations. There was a density cap that was previously in the, the previous code, uh, prior to the adoption of the twenty twenty one code, and so we're going back and mimicking just exactly what was there. Uh, amends tables uh, with respect to building heights, uh, as you're aware, as we start to see more commercial industrial development, a lot of the users today are looking for higher buildings. Uh, this will establish greater clarity when it's adjacent to residential zones, but also give uh, the ability for heights to increase when they're not adjacent to residential zones, given that they have greater setbacks at a one-to-one ratio. So every foot of building height that they increase, they would have to give an additional foot of setback uh, beyond what's already acquired, uh, if they were to propose a higher industrial building. This will be applicable in our I one and I two zones. Uh, we amend, clarify setback standards for accessory structures, allowing them to have a setback of four feet to side and rear and alley lines, and it reduces for structures that are under two hundred square feet to have a setback of two feet. What we have looked at through our neighborhood enforcement is there are quite a few open cases where we have small accessory structures, tough sheds and so forth that are under two hundred square feet, they're under the height limit of the zone, however, they're within the four-foot setback currently and is what it's done is it's created actually uh, more of an enforcement issue when they, they are again, under two hundred square feet. Uh, this will bring it into alignment with the building code, building code does not require that these structures be permitted through a building permit process, so to have them have a, a greater restrictive setback, again, this just aligns that with our building code. Uh, requiring queuing analysis, so currently our code does not have any queuing analysis requirements for drive-throughs, so in the event that we get Starbucks, Dutch Bros, Raising Canes at some point, uh, we all know what those queuing aspects look like. This does give uh, the zoning code the opportunity for the city engineer to actually ask for a queuing analysis, so that way their design, uh, are designing an actual site that can fit them and they're not queuing out into the public right-of-way. We've added also that it clarifies that they provide the headlight buffer and screening, uh, that it be three feet along the right-of-way, so that way we don't have headlights peering out into the right-of-way. Almost there. Um, RV storage, so currently the code as it was adopted in twenty twenty one has an error within it and it simply restricts RV storage to ten percent of the lot. Um, it was actually supposed to be, or I take that back, it restricts warehouse or mini storage to ten percent of the lot. Uh, we know that that wasn't intended to be the case, it was supposed to restrict just the RV storage to ten percent of the area that was set aside for the mini storage or or warehouse storage areas. So this will correct that particular element of the code as well. Uh, we do go into require, uh, clarifying roof and ground mounted solar requirements, this is considered consistent with industry standard, a lot of the solar requirements are not something that's enforceable under local jurisdictions, so we address that. We also address the to, the sizes of tiny homes, uh, this is consistent with state statute, three hundred square feet, no less than and no greater than eight hundred and sixty square feet. It also clarifies some of the standards that we've been working with on staff, staff trying to implement setback standards when it comes to patio covers that are attached or detached in in the rear yards. This clarifies that the patio covers uh, can be within five feet of the rear yard, however, can also have a two and a half foot overhang and that's measured from the post. And again, this is consistent with building code. It does clarify also that uh, screening of utility cabinets, screening is not required when it's in a PUE or in the residential zones, currently the code uh, states that it, it is, and if that was the case, we'd have block wall utility enclosures around just about every cabinet, every transformer that you would see in our residential zones as well as commercial. Uh, what it does do though is it does go back in and we actually clarify additional standards that's if you do have ground mounted mechanical equipment or mechanical equipment associated with residential use, AC condensers, propane tanks and so forth, that it, that those do be screened from public view. And then lastly, one of the, the major amendments that we're proposing tonight, parking requirements to reduce the number of parking spaces for mini storage, currently the code requires one space for every thousand square feet of building area, so if you have a forty thousand square feet, you require forty parking spaces for a, a self-storage facility. We do believe that's onerous in keeping with other jurisdictions and looking at it, uh, staff is recommending that there be one space for every fifty units plus two for a manager's unit or office. Definitions are also be am- being amended this evening, those definitions are, are in your staff reports and within the exhibits that are attached, they do align with the amendments that are being proposed tonight. Overall, the analysis for uh, from, from a staff perspective, we looked at this as it does clarify the existing code, it allows for implementation and enforcement by our Neighborhood Enforcement Division, implementation by our city planners, allows for greater latitude and flexibility in the code's interpretation and application, lessens restrictions that result in impacts to neighborhood services, again, this is going back to the, the small accessory structures, uh, playhouses and so forth, eliminates outdated requirements that result in excessive demands on proposed development, the parking standard setbacks, increased building heights uh, for industrial zones, demonstrates code flexibility to aid in attracting new businesses and manufacturing enterprises, and again, aligns our code with our building code. The findings for the Zone Text Amendment this evening, this proposal is consistent with the Kingman General Plan and our other adopted plans within the city and policies. Proposed amendments are not detrimental to public interest, health and safety and convenience and welfare, they are intended to still support orderly development within the city and promote and promote such. The proposed amendments are necessary to address demonstrated community need by establishing clarity in the code and the enforceability. Proposed amendments are necessary to respond to substantial changes in conditions and policy as they address missing development standards and introduce new standards that support and aid in attracting new enterprises to the to the city of Kingman. And lastly, the proposed amendments internally consistent with other applicabilities and sections of the code itself. This particular amendment was duly noticed within the Kingman Daily Minor. We've received no departmental or agency comments. The Planning and Zoning Commission did hear this item on November 13th. It recommended a the item be approved, recommended approval of the item before the mayor and city council at a five to one vote. As such, staff is recommending approval of ordinance 1971, adopting the proposed amendments tonight associated with Z zero twenty four zero 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 two. I am available for any questions. I was a mouthful.
I was, thank you. Someone's finally speaking more than me. No. Council, do you have any questions or comments before I open up the public hearing?
For the P and Z Commission, that one nay. Do they have any feedback?
The feedback at the meeting that evening is there was concern in regards to the need for the planning commission as they move forward before removing their authority for review over a conditional use permit. The planning commission is a duly appointed body. It is required under Arizona revised state statutes. So they will continue to serve as a recommending body. They will continue to serve and review the CUPs and make a recommendation to you. That information was provided. However, that was that was the one dissent, it's concern.
Any other comments, questions? All right, this is a public hearing, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak? We don't have anyone signed up, but does anyone from the audience wish to speak on this item? I'll ask one more time. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Welcome. Can you please state your name for me?
Scott Jackson.
Thank you.
Thank you. We just had a question regarding one of the zoning changes. It appeared to say that in residential areas that there'd be the need for a fence or some obscuring medium to block air condensers or propane tanks. And I was wondering if there was a lot size tied to that? Because there's often larger lots, maybe there are three acre parcels, one acre parcels within the city limits. And oftentimes, they're not putting up block walls to block their air condenser, they're just their house. And we were wondering if, yeah, there was a lot size tied to that requirement.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any wishing to speak? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Jason, if you'd like to come back up and address that question?
Certainly, Vice Mayor Somali, Council. With respect to lot size, currently, the code does allow for or does call for screening of your mechanical equipment. It's just not specific. So when it is citywide, there's no lot size restrictions currently to it. So all this does is clarify what those types of items are.
So does it need to be shielded by a block wall?
A block wall, some it can be an internal screening. It can be a vinyl fence. It can be any of those. It could be just around the equipment. So we're not talking that you have to fence your entire property, no.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. All right. I've closed the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 1971.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We're going to move on to item E. Public hearing resolution fifty five thirty five dash SB twenty two dash zero 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 one, Black Rock Pre-Plat Track six oh five three. Request from Travon Pennington with Angle Homes Mohave Land Holdings LLC, property owner and applicant, Mohave Engineering Associates, project engineer, to approve a revised preliminary subdivision plat, Black Rock subdivision track six oh five three. The revised preliminary plat includes 235 residential lots and nine parcels on approximately 78.28 acres and is located north of East Walupai Mountain Road and east of Yavapai Drive. The entire subdivision will be served by city water and sewer extensions. The revised preliminary plat and drainage report have been reviewed by the planning department, city engineer and other agencies and were found to be generally in accordance with city requirements. The revised preliminary plat also appears to be in accord with the requirements of ordinance number fifteen twenty three, which approved the initial rezoning from RR to R one six, R one two ten and R one twenty on February sixth, two thousand and six. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial three to three. Hello, Jason.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Vice Mayor Somali and Council. Before I get started, I will want to make one change or clarification as the recommendation was three, three. It was a recommendation for approval. However, because it was a tie vote, it resulted in a denial or no recommendation coming before you this evening. So I hope that helps clarify what the what the motion was, at least from the Planning and Zoning Commission. As stated, this is an application on the behalf of Travon Pennington High Desert Land Holdings. This is to subdivide 73.20 acres into 235 lots. It should be noted that this is in an existing R one six, R one ten and R one twenty zones, which results in a density of 3.25 dwelling units to the acre. I say that for clarification. I know that this particular project came before you or at least a rezone associated with this property came before the Planning and Zoning Commission and ultimately was going to be presented before the city council, before it was removed or withdrawn by the applicant. There was a proposal to rezone this property. It did not get favorable recommendation through the Planning and Zoning Commission. The community that came out and spoke in regards to it as well, which was why the applicant withdrew the application. They've since gone back. They've revised their actual preliminary plat as stated in the description. And the revised preliminary plat does follow the R one six, R one ten and R one twenty zones that are already established on the site. And again, this goes back to a zoning that was established in two thousand and six. As shown on the aerial, this particular project is located just north of Walupai Mountain Road. It's just west of Yavapai Mountain Road and east of Seneca or west of Seneca and east of Havapai Mountain Road. Just for proximity purposes, this just shows our city administration building. It shows actually where existing fire station number four is on Walupai as well as the Walupai Elementary School. And as shown on the star, it's the location of the Black Rock subdivision. As stated, the property is bisected by several zones. So starting along the westerly boundary, it transitions from the the medium density, low density designations of R one six all the way to R one ten through the center of the site and then to R one twenty, more of an estate style or larger sized lot as you traverse the site to the east. And of course, it borders some of the larger lot development that's to the east of it. Part of the subdivision analysis for a preliminary plat is really looking at it to make sure that it meets the minimum lot size requirements, that has adequate access and it meets the designations of the general plan. The zoning is already established on the site. The LDR designation of one to two dwelling units to the acre and the medium density designation of three dash eight, three to eight dwelling units to the acre is what's required under the general plan as proposed. This particular project is underbuilding what would be allowed on that site and has a proposed 3.25 dwelling units to the acre. Again, the minimum lot sizes being R one nine six only requires a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. The applicant's proposal does allow for lots that are 6,000 square feet to 22,865 square feet. And this is located in the R one dash six designation. In the R one ten designation, requires a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. Lots range from 10,000 square feet to 25,105 square feet. And then the R one twenty or half acre lot sizes, 20,000 square foot minimum lot areas, they range from 20,000 square feet to 30,833 square feet. The exhibit for you is just really an outline of the preliminary plat that's being proposed by the applicant. If approved this evening, the applicant would then be able to move forward in preparing the final plat, final engineering designs, which does come back before this body for final approval. As part of the preliminary plat, the Planning and Zoning Commission did have to take into consideration several items, blocks two and three, which were over 1,320 lineal feet. Staff felt that the overall subdivision was still in compliance with the subdivision standards. The exception being requested proposed, no concern with staff. They still provided northwest connectivity through the project or east-west connectivity through the project site. The other part was to allow for single tier lots. And again, no staff objection. There was a position that also allowed for the elimination of a requirement of a 10 foot wide dedicated parcel. And again, this was to allow for connectivity. That connectivity is again is being provided through the various circuitous routes that are proposed with the site's subject circulation. And I'll just go back to that real quick so you can see it. So coming from the east at the bottom of the map to the west at the top of the map, you'll notice that the site circulation does provide for that cross connectivity utilizing the proposed circulation. The analysis of the exceptions that are before you this evening is would they be a detriment to public safety, health and welfare? No, we have existing circulation that's proposed by the the map itself. It's is the condition, a request for exception that's on a unique circumstance. Good in topography, again, the overall design layout of the lotting and the circulation in order to serve for egress and egress purposes do not impact this and the exceptions would not be the granting of anything that's not already in the provision of our zoning ordinance, general plan or the subdivision ordinance as it is permitted. Overall, the subdivision's infrastructure was analyzed. So the subdivision itself will be providing wastewater, water and drainage infrastructure associated with it. Water is served via an eight inch water service line located in Havapai Drive, adjacent to the site, does require extensions onto Walupai Mountain Road, which also would be eight inches in nature. Sewer is also available and extensions are required to connect within the subdivision. Each phase has been designed to have retention within each of the respective phases and dedicated for this to the city for drainage purposes. And all the drainage parcels are also indicated as open space, which allows for them to be utilized for open space purposes when they're not being utilized for drainage purposes. These also drainage purposes were part of the original approval in ordinance fifteen twenty three when this original subdivision was looked at. The site itself has been posted. Property owners within 300 feet have been notified and public notice was published in the Kingman Daily Minor. As of the staff report, we did receive a letter of opposition, a letter of also received from the public. Additional correspondence was received. It was provided to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their consideration. All the internal departments and outside agency concerns are addressed in the staff report as well as the conditions of approval. In conclusion, the preliminary plat has been designed in accordance to the city's zoning and subdivision ordinance, with the exceptions that we discussed this evening. Lots meet the minimum lot width, depth and area as prescribed by their respective zones, which was established in two thousand and six. The subdivision is designed to extend and incorporate the necessary infrastructure to serve the site. Subdivision implements the city's general plan, LDR and MDR designations. Again, allowing for one to two dwelling units and three to eight dwelling units to the acre. This particular project is underbuilding the site and providing a density of 3.25 dwelling units to the acre. And lastly, the subdivision does facilitate the development of housing to support the housing needs of the city of Kingman and that of Mohave County. Staff's recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission was based on our analysis and contained in the staff report, that recommendation be approval to the mayor and city council. The Planning and Zoning Commission, again, they did vote three, three. It was a tie. It was a recommendation for approval. Aside from what my slide here says, it was for a recommendation of approval, but it did result in a denial due to the tie, as we discussed earlier. So before you this evening, the mayor and city council, we are recommending that that set aside the Planning and Zoning's recommendation adopt resolution five five three five, approving preliminary plat Black Rock for Black Rock Track six zero five three, subject to the conditions in the staff report's approval and conditions one through six. Planning and Zoning Commission, just a quick update. Again, these are some of the items that were discussed that the the community came forward with, access, drainage, lot sizes, police staffing, fire response, drainage and the Dakota Access. So staff's response with respect to those concerns that were raised by the planning commission, again, we go back to the lots. The lots have been designed in accordance with the zoning that is allowed on the site. There were concerns in regards to greater integration and open space of the parks. There's a total of nine parcels that are set aside for drainage and open space within the subdivision itself. And access, this project has been analyzed by the city's engineer. It does provide adequate ingress and egress to serve the site as well as for emergency purposes. As I stated earlier, I did correct the recommendation that was made by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The conditions of approval are before you on the screen as well as in your staff report. I'm available to answer any questions and I'll leave the proposed preliminary plat there for your review.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Any questions of council? No? All right, I know that the applicant is here. Does the applicant wish to speak before I open up the public hearing? All right, come on down.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor and Council. My name is Tyler Engel and this is Scott Jackson. Or he'll be coming up in a minute. We're with High Desert Land Companies and Angle Homes, better known by, of course. And excited to present a couple plots for you this year or today. They've been many years in the making. The zoning is about two decades old on this and our next item. So excited to be bringing them forth to you and excited about the growth that the Kingman is experiencing with the interchange going in, all the construction going on at the airport. If you haven't driven through there, it's pretty exciting. And out in the valley as well. And we want to be there to help with with housing, all these people and the growth in Kingman. Want to touch on real quick, the growth that's being expected. Last year, 2023, Mohave County did a housing needs assessment study. Was very thorough. They did a bunch of public meetings throughout the county and hired some outside demographic consultants. And in their report, it says that they expect the city of Kingman inside the city limits to need 8,000 houses by 2045. So in the next 20 years or so, needing about 8,000 houses. Contrary to some of the the public comments recently, Kingman's actually been on a decline, at least in the city limits, on our new housing permits. In 2017, they got up to 263. And then they stayed the same 2018, 263 permits. Then they went up to 300 for 20 and 21. Then they've been on a decline since then, last year getting below 200. And this year so far also being under 200. And that's not so much market demand. We're still selling the same amount of houses or more than ever. Just a lot of those end up being in the county now with some of the city projects such as these. Being a little slower and and a lot of that infill, the old lots developed 20 years ago are now being taken out of the buildable pool. And so we are needing some more subdivisions to service those coming to Kingman. And I want to turn some time over to Scott to touch on some more growth items.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, council members. I just wanted to address some of the the concerns that the public has. We appreciate an active public that's involved with the community. We love Kingman. One of the things that not many people know, but a couple of years ago, and I'm kind of preaching to the choir, but Kingman enacted some development impact fees to help pay for some of the infrastructure that Kingman needs. And so for every residential home that's built, there's over $7,000 in impact fees that are designated for police, fire, parks, street sewer. And then there's also the the permit fee and sales tax that the city receives on top of that. So on on average, the city receives close to $14,000 total per a residential home that's built in Kingman. And those funds get to be used towards those infrastructure projects. For Black Rock specifically, some of the those development costs being used near this project would be the turn lanes being added to Walupai Mountain Road. So that's an example of some of those impact fees being used towards improving infrastructure and helping traffic on Walupai Mountain Road. Those impact fees also went to helping improve in Eastern, the big project that you just had. And thankfully, due to the King, the rattlesnake wash off ramp that's going in, we're going to see reduced traffic along Walupai Mountain Road as more of that gets funneled up to the north and west. Regarding police and fire, which was a concern, I think everyone wants to make sure the community is kept safe. Again, those development impact fees, they're slated to help outfit for new officers, providing new vehicles and outfitting for the police officers as well as helping towards the construction of Fire Station twenty five. So care a lot about that. Parks, Sunbelt Park, which is a big initiative the city is taking on. We're excited about. Parks, Sunbelt Park, which is a big initiative the city's taking on, we're excited about that. Um, there's also those impact fees that'll be going towards that park specifically. Um, another concern that was addressed was, was flooding in the, the past. I don't know if, uh, I touched something, but if we could get the plat map up, there's been, um, previously, there's mud that sometimes will wash across Yavapai Road, uh, just because it is an open field. Once this is developed, that water is going to be channeled into drainage sites. It's going to be contained so that no longer is going to be a problem. We're not going to see mud flowing across Yavapai that's going to need to be, um, cleaned up after every rainstorm. Some of the other big concerns were schools. And I had a great talk with, um, our superintendent Gretchen Dorner, um, with the school district. And over the last six years, despite the city issuing about fifteen hundred building permits, uh, tenants at schools have remained relatively flat at about seven thousand students. Um, so a lot of the people that are moving here don't necessarily, um, have many children. So we're not seeing it affect schools as much, but despite that, she was excited to let me know that the district's working on renovating Palo Christie Elementary School, which, uh, will be able to hold three hundred plus students once complete. And that they're actively working towards making sure that the school district has adequate capacity for the projected growth that Kingman's seeing. Um, another concern was the electric grid and we reached out to Unisource and got some information back about how they're expanding. Uh, they have the Black Mountain, uh, project going on where they're expanding production. So they also are planning on growth here in the area. They're taking adequate steps to make sure that we have everything that we need. And then finally, uh, we got some feedback that people feel like there's a lack of businesses or, or restaurants in the area and wanting to see more of that. Um, so I reached out to Sylvia Schaefer, part of our economic development department. She was wonderful and provided some information related to the, the considerations that companies make when trying to decide whether to relocate to Kingman. And some of the things that she pointed out were many of the larger retailers need pretty large commercial spaces with quick access to I forty. And we've, um, not that we don't have any, but we've used up a lot of that along Stockton Hill Road and Andy Devine. And, and thankfully, we're really excited about the work you guys are, are doing with Rattlesnake Wash because that's going to provide that opportunity to bring in, uh, more of these businesses as well as, um, the increased population as we see that. That's a hurdle that a lot of these businesses care about. They want to see a, a minimum and, and, uh, potential for growth in the future. So just final key points is, uh, the number of homes per an acre is actually lower than the zoning allows. Um, it's something that matches the, the housing on the, uh, west side of Yavapai and then gradually transitions to the larger lots across. So it helps make that, kind of bridge that gap. And again, we hope that everyone can, uh, see that Kingman's exciting. There's a lot of things happening. We're really appreciative of the work that the city council is doing to help us grow. So, thank you.
All right.
If you have any questions we can answer later, it's fine.
Yep, council, do you have, I do have a question for you guys. Do you, does council have any questions, Councilor Eric?
I do have one question, um, two, two questions actually. Uh, the first one, you mentioned a flat line and school attendance increase. Um, so that's, I'm assuming that means these, in previous home sales, not many families with kids, right? Is that a safe assumption?
That is, uh, sorry. Um, so she said that, that that's a partially true assumption. The other thing is there is a, a trend, um, brought up actually by the city's consultant, but we're seeing more people doing micro schools from home. So there is a, a portion of students that are not part of the local school district. Um, but, but that's a, a small percentage. And, uh, she did want to point out that the district is looking at trying to help everybody and, and looking at alternative learning models, but.
The reason I'm asking is because, uh, one of my biggest concerns is our senior population here in Kingman and the strain it causes with our doctors and our health, healthcare and emergency services. Um, have you had any sort of study or feedback or inquiry into what we have available versus what we're going to need? And then my second question is on HOA, is this an HOA area?
I believe so.
Um, yeah, it's not definitive yet, but we're leaning towards having HOA in, in Black Rock.
So besides just the, the, the required, you know, the, the strain on healthcare, um, I was curious about who's maintaining the opens, the open space, the upkeep and the road maintenance. Is that straight up onto the city versus HOA and fees?
Yeah, so the, the roads and, and right of ways, certainly, the cities in the, the past, um, in the development since I've been around, the cities always wanted to own the drainage parcels themselves. Um, we haven't quite got there to s- say whether they want a mandate that they own these or not, or they want the HOA to, to own some or, or maintain them. Um, but we're, we're flexible there on those. As far as the healthcare, we're, we're not experts there, but, but it is a, a business, you know? Kingman Healthcare Inc. is a, a business. They're a not-for-profit, but all that really means is, is they qualify to not pay taxes. Um, so as a CPA, they're, they're still a business. They're trying to make money and they'll react to the market. You know, they watch their, their, um, ER times, right? And if they get too big, then that's a, a market trigger to them to hire more doctors or to expand their ER, to hire more nurses or a bigger triage and things. Um, so I, I'm not an expert in the healthcare business, but a lot of it's probably a market demand and, and the more need that they see from the, the community, then, then the more that allows them to, to grow and hire that next doctor, the next nurses.
And while I have you there, um, I noticed that there's some empty lots in the middle of the lot or the parcels. There's like, there's like openings, like three random openings in the middle that look like they've been cleared of weeds. Is that anything in particular or is that just, uh, off, off-roading?
On, on this map specifically?
Uh, no, on the real-time map, on the aerial view of site. So if you go back maybe like ten slides. One more. That, yeah, see those, those two? You know what those are?
Yeah, so some of that was a, a little bit of pre-grading by someone that owned, um, some of the roads, which our roads don't even align up with all those anymore. And then some of those pads were when we, uh, had some excess dirt from a nearby subdivision and put some of it over there.
The reason I ask is because I enjoy the desert and I was wondering if they were being used as recreational parcels or, you know, desert for people.
They, they certainly are now because they're kind of acting as quasi-public because we don't have any signs that say to keep out. And so people walk and, and ride through there, which is fine for now, but eventually it'll be.
Thanks Tyler, thanks Scott.
So, um, my questions go back to the nine parcels for open space and, and to your point, the HOA. So I just wanted to know if there are any talks or plans. Um, I'd like to see there be some consideration given to a park or something to the effect of, uh, an HOA that maintains that. I know that council has talked over and over again that we like development, but we also like development that, you know, can, can fund itself. We, you know, the parks, the people, people like that, you know? In other communities, um, that I'm familiar with, that's what developers do. They, they build those spaces to keep those individuals in there. So I would really like to encourage some consideration to an HOA and to take care of that open space. Um, eh, you know, those drainage parcels, uh, you know, are they just going to be open and a big fence around them? You know, we, we've seen, Benner done that. We've seen that a lot in our town. So, um, tho- that was a comment and a question of the tier view.
Gotcha. Um, so yeah, we were planning to have some of these, some of the, these nine parcels are much more shallow than the basins we have done. Because usually it's, it's just an engineering calculation. The engineer tells us you need this much cubic yards or feet of storage to, in order to not flood downstream. So we make them real deep and that requires a fence and it to be locked. So some of these are more shallow, like eighteen inches deep or, or two feet. So they wouldn't mandate having a fence around it. And we're planning on having a walkway around it and probably some benches. Um, we found in some of our past subdivisions, like the ranch at Long Mountain, for instance, comes to mind. There's an HOA park in there and it's hardly ever used. Most of the people there don't have kids and if they do, they have a little playground in their backyard. And so we found that, um, being able to have a walking path and a place to, to take your dog around and walk is a little more beneficial to the people that have been, been, um, buying our homes. And so that was kind of the, the, the niche we were looking at, at a couple of the, the parcels at least is to have a, a scenario like that with some open space. You can sit down, you can go for a walk or, or walk your dog.
Okay, I, I think that public perception is helpful, you know, that it's not just going to be a big fence around an open space. So, um, those are my comments. Uh, council, anybody else have any questions, comments?
I'll make one. I, I strongly support the HOA taking the, the green belt or whatever you want to call it, the drainage. Um, you know, I've seen basketball, like a third court, little basketball deal. We've seen covered picnic areas, little jungle gym or whatever you want to call it. But, um, the city can only take so many of these drainage, uh, parcels over and maintain them. You know, it keeps costing us more and more money and, uh, sometime, you know, development's going to have to pay for that. But I, I really would be happy if you guys try to push that into your HOA and, and let them manage their own neighborhood park or walkways.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, we're going to open up the public hearing. We have, uh, a few people that wish to speak. Uh, Richard Mealy, if you'll make your way up.
Madam Vice, uh, Mayor and council members, uh, thanks for letting me speak tonight. I have to apologize because I'm going to be unusually brief. Um, this is for resolution number five-five-three-five SB twenty-two dash zero-zero-one Black Rock Plat Bo- Plat Pre-Plat Track sixty-fifty-three. Please deny it. Our infrastructure will not support this project. Planning and zoning commission re- uh, recommended denial. And I've heard from a cou- a couple of council members talking about healthcare because we do have an older population moving here and I'm a prime example. I'm on my fifth doctor in five years because they all leave. So please deny it and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, sir. All right, Penny Holden? I'm sorry, if you could please state your name too before you speak.
Penny Holden, Kingman. Um, I would like for you to, before you make a decision on this, look at how many people that live on that side, the railroad tracks. Because there's, the roads going out is two, Walupai Mountain and Airway. All the roads up there is two lanes. You're putting two hundred and thirty-five homes in, which gives you about seven hundred more cars up there. That's just in one development that they're putting up there. I want to know, based on this report, the police report and the fire department, what's the safety issues up there? What is their response time going to be when emergency vehicles are trying to get up a two-lane road and stuff? I want to know, uh, if you've done an environmental study, that how is this going to impact this area? I think there's a lot of things that you guys need to consider. I used to be on the hospital board. People are four to six months out seeing a doctor. We just had another doctor leave, Dr. Klon, and they're putting all those people over to Lakeside now. So those people are lined up. I was there yesterday. It's a packed house trying to get doctors in here. They, you hear it every day that they can't get the doctors here. So, you know, you can build and build and build and bring these people in, but you don't have the infrastructure to take care of these people. You don't have medical, you don't have the fire, you don't have the police department to take care of these people. We only have, from my understanding, one officer that, that, uh, patrols on that side of the railroad tracks. I never see a cop up past Eastern unless they live up there. Very seldom do we get patrol up there. We just don't have the infrastructure. I'm not against growth. I think that we need to grow here, but we need to do smart growth. And we need to grow where the in- infrastructure keeps up on, on, on it. And I just think this is a money issue and we need to go past money because he's talking about you get fourteen thousand dollars per house. But what is a life worth? I want to know if when I call nine-one-one, that I'm going to get a police officer or a fire department in emergency. And I think my life is worth more than fourteen thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Penny. Mike Schoenfuss?
Hello again, Mike Schoenfuss. I would like you to also turn this down, uh, just like you did last February when we were all up here again. It's the same concerns, only he's actually reduced some of the things. Last time we were here, he had the Dakota Access. He brushed off on it. Some reason it got taken out. So now everybody is funneled onto Yavapai, which is my concern. When I came up and approached you with a hundred signatures from Yavapai being a Speedway and it's only going to get worse with seven hundred more cars on that road. Green space, I guess you'd call him a dry rocks bed that he wants to put in. They're not green spaces where people can really use. Yes, we do use that area now, everybody does. But, um, it won't be, it's, and we don't, not saying we don't want growth, we just want responsible growth. And then he told you, all the houses on the Yavapai side are pretty much the six thousand lot. My lot is thirty-three thousand square foot and I'm on the corner, okay? Right there on that corner. All along that road, their lots are bigger than that. So he's not matching up lot size to what's over there, like he just said. That's just not true. You can look and you could see it from here on that map. And there's a couple of other concerns on that, uh, oh, let's see. Oh, did you mention the water retention? They come and barely clean those out if we're lucky once a year. And, and you, and, and I've heard you talk before how many more you're getting. And I would be careful of that because you cannot control those now and they just become giant weed messes. You should make him put in some type of gri- actual green space that he maintains or you do partner with the city for that lot or all the whole area. He's built another five or six hundred just to the north of there also. And he's still not done with that development that he started seven years ago. So he says he needs to continue. He's got fifty-five lots left there to finish next to the subdivision. He hasn't done that yet. He hasn't touched that section. So I'm not sure why he's not working on that if he needs these so badly. I would hope that you'd vote against this again. Thank you.
Thank you. Harry Al- Alenick? Alenick?
Good evening. I'm Harry Alenick. I live at twenty-three ninety Steamboat Drive, Kingman. And I, I agree with everything that everyone has said previously. We have an issue with Angle building two hundred and thirty-five houses in this, eh, parcel we're talking about here. They're also going to build another five hundred and fifty houses up on the east side of that, of Walupai Foothills Estates, which I think is county area. All of these cars, all the traffic, everything will come down through either Southern, Southern Avenue. My driveway is wider than Southern Avenue and I think probably wider than Walupai Mountain Road. Ever- oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that. Eh, everything that's, eh, eh, that new development, they're talking to two hundred and thirty-five houses. All those cars are going to go out onto Yavapai Drive, which is also now. There's really no way to widen that. Yavapai Drive, since it was opened up between Southern and Walupai Mountain Road, has now turned into a freeway. I've been hit, almost been hit several times out there walking my dog in the afternoon. And the issue with, we're talking healthcare, that's a problem. I had an issue with it. You can see the Band-Aid on my ear and a little skin cancer spot. Made the appointment the end of July. This was just taken care of last week. So what, whatever Angle's proposing, eh, please take a good look at that and please go with what the planning commission said last week and what they said the beginning of this year. They, it was voted down five-two in February. And then, eh, Tyler Engel pulled the request to, you know, come to the, before the council. I think it was in, in February and, uh, we, everybody came out here, wasted the council's time, wasted everybody else's time that was going to come speak. Uh, and as far as I'm concerned, this should be turned down. It's not, it's not fair to the community, uh, you know, and it's certainly, uh, going to make it tough for anybody that has to travel either Yavapai, Southern Avenue or Walupai Mountain Road due to the massive amount of cars being put in with almost eight hundred new houses being put in in that area. Anyway, I thank you for your time and have a great evening.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Rick Olson?
Good evening. I'm Rick Olson. A lot has already been said, you know. I work for a company and, you know, every year I get excited about growth. I'm all for growth. But when you hear, in my world, when we have growth, we know it's going to, we plan for it. You know, do we need a new facility? Do we need to add to the facility? Do we need to add more team members? Do we need to buy more trucks? We had that all in place before we moved forward. And if you look at where in this area, it's hard to access. I don't think the infrastructure's there yet. I think if we develop at the same time, if we build, they build out, that'd be great. But I don't see the commitment to have the infrastructure built. In terms of the open space, the drain ditches, they're dirt. And if you've gone there and walked, the fencing's loose, concrete, I mean, I don't, you know, Angle's not, you know, I don't know if they're responsible to take care of it. I wouldn't say they were, but they're not being taken care of and it's dirt. It's not open space. You might see a few people with their dogs in there, but you don't see kids in there. If you go to Seneca and Omaha, that drains ditch, not parked there, that's what should be done in the future, this new development. And personally, you know, I could live anywhere in the 12 states that my company operates in. I choose to live in Kingman and it's because personally, we're raising two granddaughters, five and a nine-year-old. They'll be with us this whole time. When they made the comments about the school, we're very, me and my wife are very in tune with our teachers at the school at Wallopai. It's overcrowded. There's our staff, too many kids, you know, so I don't know where we get there. There's not a school issue there. We need growth in this city. We need the housing. But if you look at our neighborhood to the north of that development, as an assumption, you know assumptions are, if I should do more research than that, but the assumption is that the same lot sizes are going to be the same throughout. I, when I moved here, me and the wife, yeah, they're going to build houses here eventually. Hopefully get the infrastructure right and hopefully keep the assumption while the same lot sizes. And I don't have to say this without sounding, I just want to say it anyway. But if you walk, if I challenge every, probably a lot of you maybe live in this neighborhood, but I challenge you guys before you make a decision, is walk the neighborhood and see the feel, the feel of the neighborhood from the east side, walk towards the west side but have smaller lots, it's a whole different vibe. And I think a lot of us, a lot of people here probably spent their whole life savings to buy a home here in Kingman to retire, but we're kind of in between. I'm still working for a few more years, but we have two grandkids we're raising until they're 18 out of college and that's why we picked Kingman. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else in the audience wish to speak before I close the public hearing? Anyone else? All right, I'll close. Come forward, ma'am.
Since she does have it, that's okay?
Stop there next. Go ahead and state your name.
Beverly Schoenfuss. I live, oh, it's the plat, it's fine. I live in the corner house. If you look at the plat, you can see there's a triangle up in the corner. That's where my house is, right there off the northwest corner of the proposed subdivision. And I do walk that area every day. It's great. There's, a lot of us do, a lot of people do walk the trail. I also walk Yavapai every day. And you talked about the flooding. Sure, it's going to be nice that the mud will no longer run across the road. That'll be great. But the problem is, you can't, you have the plat up. Could you put the plat up there? Somebody for me? Thank you, Jason. Thanks. Currently, now the triangle there up in the upper left, that's where my house is. Currently, when the rain runs down, it just runs, right? The mud runs, it runs down the streets. The house that's opposite that corner from me, they have to sandbag. Every time it rains, they're out there with sandbags this high across their garage. Otherwise it'll flood because the water runs down the street because you know there's no culverts. They still plan on having all these houses, all these things running to Yavapai. Well, the water, when it rains up in the mountain or the snow melts, runs across Yavapai into our neighborhood. They're not planning on stopping that. If you look at the street ones, they don't, it's going to run right into Motherlode, the big street is. And so that person's house is going to continue to flood. Sure, it won't get the mud. They won't have the three inches of mud like they had the last time in their garage, but they will have water. Because it's, they're not putting in culverts. You're saying, oh, they're just going to put a big drainage ditch. Yes, across from me, there's going to be a big drainage ditch, which I appreciate. I'm glad because across from me, the other way, he put in two houses. There's two houses across from my house, not one, two. And this, to my right, was going to be three houses across from my lot. But he did put in a drainage ditch, so I like that. That's nice instead of five houses around me. But to say that there's not going to be a problem with Yavapai flooding and every single bit of egress, I know it was approved that that egress was fine to all go to Yavapai, but even Steamboat, it still goes out to Yavapai. If Yavapai floods or if there is a fire, because I mean the brush gets big along Yavapai, you can't even walk up that sidewalk half the time. That's why people walk in the dirt because the sidewalk's blocked by brush. If you, if there's a fire along there or there is a flood on Yavapai, you've got all those people with no place to go. Because you decided to turn away, they originally said he was going to have to go out Dakota, have a egress to the other direction. And that was decided he didn't have to do that. So everything's going to Yavapai. And that's where all the water runs and that's where all the traffic is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Yes, come on forward.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, City Council. A lot of people have spoken here and a lot of people were not present to speak.
Sir, can you please state your name?
I'm sorry?
State your name.
My name is Elliot Shalou, a Kingman resident. I'm really curious, at what point in time will the city council start to listen to the people who vote you in office? We, our territory, our community is being cut up like a birthday cake, sliced and diced, and now we're getting to smaller slices, packing more people into an area that many of us never anticipated would live there. And the city just keeps approving new construction projects seemingly without regard to transit situation, without regard to people wanting to shop. Everyone knows, all we have is downtown Kingman. I'm sure each of you have been on Wallopai or another major thoroughfare at 2:00 in the afternoon. It takes, it takes a great amount of time to get from the I-40 to Airway. So when is enough enough? When will the city say, you know what? We're being overdeveloped. We don't want another Phoenix. We want a Kingman, which is supposed to be an open space area to allow freedom of expression, freedom of walking, and that's being taken away from us. And it's painful and discouraging. And I would ask you to think about that. I would ask you to think about the residents of Kingman, not packing them in, but the residents that are already here trying to enjoy a peaceful life, which is being slowly decimated. Intolerable. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Jason, did you want to come up and address the concerns?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Smalley, Council. With respect to the concerns that were brought forward by the public today, some of the things I noted, with respect to response time, fire, medical services and so forth, our fire department looks at our projects as they're coming forward. They evaluate them for needs on an ongoing basis. Our police department does that as well. Police department's required to provide officers at a ratio based on the population. So that is an ongoing analysis that both of our emergency services departments do take into consideration. And that's done on an annual basis, not just on a project-by-project basis. With respect to environmental analysis, this particular project site, as you can see, is fairly fallow. It's traversed by many walking trails and so forth. With respect to the city's zoning ordinance, there is no environmental analysis required of the pre-plat. With respect to lack of infrastructure as development occurs with this particular project site, infrastructure does come with it. So you'll have infrastructure that extends water sewer to the site as well as out to Wallopai Mountain Road. With respect to, I know one of the concerns that was brought forward was Dakota access. Dakota access was originally part of this particular project site and proposal when it was initially looked at back in January. However, upon further analysis with respect to the drainage, the drainage flows that run through there, it would not be a safe environment for having another access. So that's why it was actually taken off of the table. I can tell you that both fire as well as myself from a planning and zoning standpoint did go back in and reevaluate that. We sat back down with the applicant to see if there was the ability to get that access in. It's just not approvable access. With respect to traffic, I think we talked about that. There are improvements that are coming with this particular project. There are also improvements coming with our infrastructure in the general area, additional connectivity points with respect to the I-40 as the area continues to build out. And then with respect to schools, schools do their own school planning. So the school district actually does reach out to local jurisdictions. They get an understanding of what the number of units are being proposed, what subdivisions have been proposed. And they have their own school planners that actually plan for facilities and growth based upon the subdivisions that are being approved. As stated, the open space this evening, there are nine open space lots across the site. And a lot of them indicated that they are dirt and that's the only thing they are today. This site is unimproved. So as they come forward and they actually do their improvement plans, we'll be looking at further details with respect to how their drainage areas are being planned for and purpose with any type of walking paths and so forth. I think in closing, with respect to the comments in general, this is just the pre-plat this evening. The final plat does take into consideration final engineering drawings with respect to water sewer master plans. Again, access is continuously looked at. The pre-plat does look at the overall subdivision design layout that's before you this evening. And it has been designed in accordance with the existing zoning that is in place on site, which is what entitles the developer to develop the site with residential. I hope I've answered everyone's questions.
Council, do you have any questions? I have a couple.
Certainly.
So do you know if this is going to be a phased development?
I don't, off the top of my head, I can defer to the applicant. Yes.
So that is my question, how, over what period of time? So maybe we have the applicant come forward.
Yeah, I'll defer to the applicant.
Thank you. Who, who wants to speak? The reason I'm asking this question is because the traffic analysis that has been done with the respect of what's going forward on the 40 and the diversion of traffic, that has the potential for diverting a lot of traffic once it gets constructed. That's an 18-month build at least. So I want to, I'm concerned about traffic, so I want to know if it's a phased development and over what period of time. So if you're taking that into consideration.
Yeah, this subdivision is proposed to be built in three phases. Phase one is all, is all the frontage on Yavapai. So at the completion of phase one, Yavapai is going to have full street improvements, both sides of that road. And this development, it hasn't been talked about tonight, but this development also requires the construction of a left turn lane on Wallopai Mountain Road. So the city has two projects, a project at Central and a project at Seneca to add turn lanes there. This project, when it's built, will add a turn lane at Seneca.
So phase one?
Phase one.
How many homes?
If my eyes were better, I could tell you 77 homes in the first phase.
So phase one, 77 homes, in what period of time?
That we, right now, those plans for phase one are into the city. We're hoping to maybe have approval on those if this goes well tonight, within the next four to five months. And we'll probably at that time start construction on phase one.
So build out of phase one is?
Less than 18 months from now, that phase one will be complete and the homes will be being built.
So 77 homes, phase one, 18 months.
Yep.
Okay. Phase two? 79? I, I know this is painful, but this is part of my thought process. We're not putting hundreds.
That's the start of building the homes, correct? 18 months?
That would be the end of development. So that's when the streets would be in. So then we'd have to build the homes. So there won't be a single home built, finished in 18 months because it takes that, it's going to take 18 months to put the street.
To finish, build the subdivision and then at that point, we'll turn that over to Angle Homes Home Construction and maybe that takes the next 12 to 18 months to build those homes.
So it takes 18 months for infrastructure?
And it's a long process. Yeah, build out, if we use the subdivision just north of it, that's taking more than 10 years to build out. It's definitely a process. It's partially driven by demand, but we've seen on average between 25 to 30 homes being purchased and built in that area in any given year. And so based on that, it'd take three years to build out that first phase and somewhere towards the end of that, we'd start the plans rolling for developing that second phase.
All right. That, I mean, that, that's where I'm going with this. It's not going to be boom. We have over 200 homes. We have impact of traffic. We have impact on our, you know, fire and police and, you know, it's going to be over time and it's going to be a slow go. So that, I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to justify to the public how I'm thinking about it in a public forum. So just, just so you understand that it is a process. It's going to be a long process. And so I just want that out there into the public. So thank you for indulging me. I appreciate that. Does it, council have any other questions, comments? Counselor Staley?
I just wanted to clarify a few things with you that's sort of come up tonight. So one of the things is the public is using this land to recreate, but I want to clarify, that's public property right now. It's privately owned. It is not public property. So people are using it, but it is not theirs to use. Is that correct?
Vice Mayor Smalley, Councilwoman Scott Staley, yes, that is correct. It is private land. They're currently traversing it for their own personal nature, but yes, it is private.
Okay. So it's not city-owned land?
That's correct.
That's open space. It's always been zoned for homes.
Yes, that's correct.
And what we're looking at tonight, again, just to clarify, is the preliminary plat. The house is already being built according to our zoning. And then once this moves forward, that's where you will dig in on open space, what these drainage areas are going to look like, all of those extra things that people are worried about, that's where you kind of make, we put those down and say, okay, the builder has to do the following things to make this more livable or to improve this area.
So the preliminary plat tonight does address the overall lotting design, the layout, the subdivision, the drainage courses. If it is the council's desire that they add a condition that addresses that the developer addressed that in a more specific way, such as a walkable path and so forth, we can certainly do that. We can walk away also, understanding that that's what the council's desire is and we can work with the applicant to ensure that that gets implemented. And you would see that when it comes back with the final plat.
So those things come back?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, that's at our discretion to put that in there this evening with our approval, correct?
If the council.
It's not going to traditionally come back.
That's correct. If the council desires to take that upon their discussion, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Would that include discussions of an HOA?
Vice Mayor Smalley, Councilwoman Eric, yes, if there's a desire for the HOA and that's the part of the discussion of the council, then we will take note of that.
Because where I'm at right now, I mean, I'm very pro-growth. I, but I don't live there. And if the residents of a place, of a neighborhood, say that this place has problems like Seneca, like Yavapai, who am I to say no to that? Like who am I to not listen to them? I mean, if there's problems that we haven't addressed, whether it's speeding. I mean, if there's problems that we haven't addressed, whether it's speeding, um, or the, you know, and if, if they're concerned about traffic on Wallop Mountain Road, I don't traverse that road every day. And I would feel much more comfortable waiting for something like Rancho Santa Fe Parkway to be completed before considering, before we add 200 homes and 700 cars to the same two exits out of the region. Um, I would also feel like I, I, I got your, your clarification about Dakota. That was another thing for me. And there's still another sub-development next door that's not 100% finished yet, correct?
Vice Mayor Smalley, uh, Councilman Eric, that is correct.
So it's going to be not just 77 homes in the next two years, ten, five years. It's also going to be whatever's coming from there. Is that a fair assumption?
Yeah, I can't speak to the developer's timeline on the ultimate build out. But I think, uh, as, as we look at development across Kingman in general, they're planning and moving ahead with, with future lotting, future subdivisions. It takes a while to get through the process, as much as we try to streamline it uh, as they're moving forward and providing housing within the community. If we're wait, waiting for them to build out the next subdivision, that would put this project two or three years behind, uh, in order to provide housing to, to the community.
Okay, I, I hear that. Um, but, I mean, this is the pre-plat. I think this is where we need to talk about HOAs and, and the green space and, and kind of get those meshed out before we approve this and go down the road further. Because that's when you get invested and that's when it's harder to come against something, come out against something that you want. So, uh, that's where I stand.
Vice, mayor, could I just?
Yes.
So we can't require them to have an HOA. There's no requirement for that. We can encourage and we can discuss that option, but we can't require HOAs. And then when you also look at these, these open spaces, statute is pretty clear that if we're looking at open spaces, then it's something we need to address with them early. And we buy those open spaces. This is not something that we can require some kind of dedication beyond what we're required to utilize with the zoning, I mean, with the, uh, the flood control. So when we're looking at this preliminary plat process, this is not like a zoning process where you have legislative discretion to make certain decisions on what you can and cannot do. This is a ministerial function where someone applies, applies for a preliminary plat. They meet the conditions. Counsel approves the preliminary plat. It's not a discretionary thing, as long as they meet the discussion, or meet the conditions and the requirements that are currently in code, which according to staff, that's where they're at. I would say you, you really have a very uphill battle to deny the preliminary plat. And if you're looking at that, you need to have some very specific reasons why you're doing it, and they need to be justified legally. But at this point, according to staff, they meet our, our current design codes, zoning codes. They have a right to build on that property. It's a by right situation. Arizona's very pro-development. Arizona is, Arizona's very pro-private property rights. So we have to be careful of how far we're going to digress off of what you can and cannot do.
Thank you, Carl. Any other questions or comments? I'm, go ahead.
So, um, Carl, I'm going to have you simplify that a little bit. You're telling us that this subdivision meets all of our laws, standards, zoning. And so we don't have any legal standing to deny approving this preliminary plat tonight. Is that what you're saying?
I'm going to say, I'm going to qualify by saying yes.
Okay.
But if you have something that staff hasn't thought about that is very specific to our legal codes, then you can't make that decision to, to, to deny.
And one more question on that. Uh, healthcare and doctors, since those are private, they don't, they're not part of that.
It's outside the scope of the review. The same with the schools and everything else. And I know a lot of folks are talking about, we don't, they want to slow down development, saying we don't have the resources. There's a statutory process to, to do what's called a moratorium on development and on building. But it's very strict. It's very formulaic. And you have to say that the, the city has outgrown certain very specific items. Uh, and that's only good for 120 days. And then you'd have to do another process to review that all over again. So it's very difficult to basically stop growth. Because again, the state wants growth. That's what the state relies on. That's what the cities rely on. And yes, we're looking for obviously very responsible growth, which is why we have whatever current rules and regulations we have in place. If the council wants to change those in the future, obviously the council can look at changing those in the future. But you can't hold up one actual application saying, I'm going to make a change in the future so that, that would make a change on the current application.
Thank you, Carl.
Anyone else? Any comments? All right. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve resolution number 5535.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We are going to take a 15-minute break. Uh, that allows those folks that were here for this particular item to clear, uh, the room and we'll come back.
All right, we are on item F. I am going to recuse myself from F and G for conflict of interest. And I'm going to turn the meeting over to Counselor Ward. It's all yours.
Okay, on public hearing on resolution number 5536 SB 23-0006, Kingman Crossing pre-plat track 1993. Request from Travelling Pennington with Angle Holmes, applicant, Mojave Engineering Associates Project Engineer, Pioneer Title Agency Incorporated trustee under trust number 9116, property owner, to approve a revised preliminary subdivision plat for Kingman Crossing subdivision track 1993. The subdivision includes 1,128 residential lots, six, as 16 parcels of properties located on the north side of Interstate 40, west of Prospector Street, on approximately 261.12 acres. The subdivision will be developed in 13 phases. The revised preliminary plat has been reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Department, City Engineer, Public Works Department, and other agencies, and were found to be generally in accord with city requirements. The revised preliminary plat also appears to be in accord with requirements of resolution number 4009, which approved included requests for exception and several conditions in 2004. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved SB 23-0006 at its regular meeting of November the 13th, 2024, subject to conditions of approval 1 through 8. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval 5.1.
Counselor Ward, counsel, appreciate it. Thank you. As stated, this is subdivision case SB 23-0006. This is Kingman Crossing Track 1993 preliminary plat. Applicant is Pioneer Title Agency or the property owner with applicant being Mojave Engineering on behalf of Angle Holmes. And as stated, this is coming back before you as a revised preliminary plat for Kingman Crossing Track 1993, subdividing the 262 acres into 1,129 lots within the R16 zone, resulting in a density of 4.31 dwelling units to the acre. Just a little bit of history on this particular project site, as Kingman Crossing has been an ongoing project for a while. This particular project area was annexed into the city January 6, 1992. August 2004, the property was rezoned R16. And then August 2004, the original preliminary plat for Kingman Crossing Track 1993 was approved by resolution 4009, consisting of the 13 phases that's back before you this evening. So far to date, four final plats for track 1993, A, B, C, and D have been finalized or recorded, allowing for a total of 321 lots. This is important because this has taken place over from 2005 to current 2023. And currently, this is really back before you tonight because our subdivision ordinance is a bit outdated and it allows for preliminary plats to actually expire after two years. The Arizona State revised statutes where it addresses subdivision, subdivisions in themselves do not require this expiration date. As such, the applicant only had an opport, his only opportunity was to come back before and really reinstate this map. So that's why you have a new map number. It is still part of the original Kingman Crossing's development. The phasings are outlined as part of the original development. And I'm just going to kind of skip through and really get to where we're at today. If you look at the R19.6 property that's in yellow along Santa Rosa Drive, those are part of the original phases to the east of Santa Rosa Drive that have already been recorded as part of the Kingman Crossings plat. And the preliminary plat really does address the remainder of the vacant properties that you see there to the west or to the east of it. The general plan requires, calls for a medium density designation of three to eight dwelling units to the acre. Proposed is 4.31, therefore, again, under building what's allowed under the general plan. Minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet is required. Lots in the particular preliminary plat range from 6,000 to 13,680 square feet in area. Next few slides really just go through the preliminary plat. And again, this is a plat that was already previously approved. So the preliminary plat only seeks to revise the phasing numerology, adopt updated drainage standards, and establish a new approval date as the previous extensions have been exhausted. No other changes are being approved. As part of this pre-plat, originally under resolution 4009, there were several exceptions to the subdivision ordinance that were granted that deal with double fronting lots, single tiered lots, and lots that were less than 400 feet in length or exceeded the 1,320 feet in length. Those same exceptions as approved under the resolution 4009 are still in place today. Would continue with this new analysis, as well as the approval this evening should you decide to do so. Overall, the subdivision's been designed to meet the minimum requirements as it pertains to the following: access, drainage, infrastructure, water, wastewater, or the internal circulation. All the streets have been designed to accommodate the topography and the drainages of the site. There are four streets that connect to Airway Avenue and two that are connections to Prospector. There are no additional connections to the west side of the subdivision. The noticing was submitted for this particular project. The site was posted. Mailers were notified to any of those within 300 feet of the project site and also published in the Kingman Daily Minor. As of the writing of the staff report, when it went before the Planning and Zoning Commission, we had one letter of opposition, one letter of support. All items and concerns that were addressed by outside city agencies, as well as internal departments, are addressed in your staff reports, as well as the conditions of approval. When this was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission on November 13th, public comments addressed access, drainage, crime, fire response, as well as drainage and flooding. Planning and zoning recommendation was to recommend approval of the preliminary plat to the Mayor and City Council with a vote of five to one. Preliminary plat has been designed in accordance to the city's zoning and subdivision ordinances. The lots meet the minimum lot width, depth, and area prescribed by the zoning that's already established on the site. The applicant will continue to develop the site and continue to extend and improve with the infrastructure with each of the respective phases. Subdivision does implement the city's general plan designation of medium density residential, resulting in 4.31 dwelling units to the acre. And like their previous subdivision, it does facilitate the development of housing that support the housing needs of the city of Kingman and Mojave County. Therefore, Mayor, we are recommending that the Mayor and City Council affirm the planning commission's approval from its regular meeting of November 13th, approve SB 23-0006, and the conditions of approval 1 through 8. The conditions are noted above for you, and I am here to answer any questions.
I don't have anything, Jason.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept resolution.
This is a public hearing.
Sorry. I thought you were going to ask a question. That's why I was.
I'd like to open a public hearing on resolution number 5535, SB 22-0006.
We're at 5536.
Yeah, yeah, wrong one. 5536, SB 23-006, Kingman Crossing pre-plat track number 1993. Is there anyone that would like to comment?
Just real quick. Thank you, counsel. Tyler Engel. This one in particular has been a very long road. I think it was four and a half years ago when staff told us that the preliminary plat couldn't just be extended, that it need to be updated for, and a traffic study done, and a drainage study done. And we've gone through three city engineers and two city managers and three city planners since then. So it's been very difficult to navigate all of that, but I think we got there. This is the one that has the Kingman Crossing Boulevard in it that hopefully will connect us to a Kingman Crossing interchange one day. There is a condition there that some of this doesn't, doesn't go fully valid. I forgot the wording on it, until we finalize the development agreement of Kingman Crossing Boulevard. The, we don't own all the phases still. It's on an option agreement. And so the other party has been a little bit difficult to work with. So we're working with staff to try and change the wording of the agreement a little bit. Perhaps that I would buy Phase G right away, which is the one that includes the Boulevard, and then have a trigger just with me legally so that it's an agreement between the city and all the phases that I own and that we would put up an assurance potentially and get that built within a shorter term, three or five years or something. So that's still pending and in the works, but I think we've got everything in the plat and we're looking forward to continuing building out there by Kingman Crossing. Any questions for me? Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this subject? Not, I'll close the public hearing. And now I entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to accept resolution number 5536.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Resolution passes.
And the next one is public hearing, resolution number 5537, SB 23-005, Kingman Crossing final plat track 1993, that's from Travis Pennington, Angle Holmes applicant.
Counselor Member Ward, would you turn on your mic, please?
Oh, I turned it off. Okay. Engineering Associate, project manager, Pioneer Title Agency Incorporated trustee under trust number 9324, property owner, to approve a revised preliminary subdivision plat for Kingman Crossing subdivision, track 1993-E. The final plat includes 83 lots in one parcel on approximately 20.56 acres. The property is zoned R16 residential, single family, 6,000 square foot lot minimum, and is located south of Spur Cross Drive, within Phase B of Kingman Crossing Track 1993. The final plat improvement plans, drainage report, engineers' cost estimate have been reviewed by the Planning Department, City Engineer, Public Works Department, and other agencies, and were found to be generally in accord with city requirements. The final plat also appears to be in accord with the requirements of resolution number 4009. The included requests for exception and several conditions in 2004 for the preliminary plat for the entirety of the Kingman Crossing subdivision. A property escrow assurance from Pioneer Title Agency, Inc. to assure completion of required improvements has been submitted.
Counselor Ward, counsel, thank you. Subdivision case SB 23-005 is really the next phase for the Kingman Crossing development. This particular phase is Phase E. The applicant has been patiently waiting for us to be able to bring back the preliminary plat that you acted on just previous to this item. So before you tonight, they are seeking approval of the final plat for Phase E, which encompasses 18.78 acres, 82 lots, within the R16 zone, resulting in a density of 4.37 dwelling units to the acre. Similar to the history we provided earlier, it was annexed into the city back in 1992. The overall project site, the site is zoned R16, and this is really just an extension of the preliminary plat where they're actually coming forward with Phase Five of the phases that they've been recorded so far. This gives you just a general idea as to the location for Phase E that would be associated with this final plat. Again, the property is zoned R16. The final plat is consistent with the preliminary plat and that of the R16 zoning. It is consistent with the MDR designation requiring three to eight dwelling units to the acre. Actually, results in 4.37 dwelling units to the acre, and the lots range from 6,000 to 10,235 square feet. This is the proposed plat that's before you this evening. Again, the overall subdivision has incorporated the infrastructure, drainage, internal streets. All has been designed in accordance to the city of Kingman zoning code subdivision ordinance. Drainage parcels associated with this particular project would be dedicated to the city as for drainage maintenance purposes. They are extending a 12-inch water line in Airway Avenue. Sewer lines would be extended into the subdivision per the standards. Financial assurance acceptable as prescribed by the subdivision ordinance is part of your approval this evening. It has been reviewed by the city engineer, as well as the cost estimates, and goes in conjunction with the approved plans and improvement plans associated with this development. Project site was posted. Owner, property owners were notified within 300 feet, as well as a public hearing notice published in the Kingman Daily Minor. Again, one stat, letter of opposition, one letter of support. All items have been addressed in your staff report with respect to staff and outside agencies. In conclusion, the final plat does conform to the preliminary plat that was initially approved for this particular project site. It's been designed in accordance to the subdivision ordinance and the city of Kingman zoning code. They meet the minimum lot width, depth, and area requirements. All of the subdivision's been designed to accommodate for water, wastewater, drainage, as well as infrastructure, and those plans have been reviewed by the city engineer's office. It implements the general plan and ultimately, again, provides for housing to support the housing needs within the city of Kingman and Mojave County. Therefore, staff's recommendation this evening is that the Mayor and City Council adopt resolution 5537, thereby approving SB 23-005, the final plat for Kingman Crossing Track 1993, Phase E. And there are conditions that are associated with it, approvals 1 through 6. And these are really just to ensure that the plat continues to be in compliance with city code as they are going through their actual development process. It also does have a condition within it that addresses the fact that the development agreement should be in place prior to construction of the site, or an alternative agreement be in place. And I'm available for any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Jason? In that case, I'll open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak on this matter? Okay. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, close the public hearing. I'll entertain them.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number 5537, SB 23-005, Kingman Crossing final plat track 1993-E.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All that, any nays? Resolution passes.
All right, moving on to item H. Thank you, sir. Resolution 5540, campus of the November 5th, 2024 general election. Arizona revised statute requires the governing body to campus this type of election within six to 20 days of the election. Election materials will be available online prior to the meeting for inspection by the council and/or public. Staff recommends approval of resolution number 5540. Ms. Annie?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor, counsel. It's pretty straightforward. This is just part of the post-election process is certifying the results. The county certified the results at their meeting yesterday. So the resolution has those numbers. The general plan did receive the number of votes needed to proceed. So as soon as counsel chooses to adopt this resolution, then it will be taken care of and the general election will be complete.
All right, thank you. Any questions of Annie? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Department reports 7A, water sewer, water service line material notification. Welcome, Rob.
Vice Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to talk to you a little bit tonight about the service line material notification. And I'll just start out with a little bit of the background. In 1991, EPA published the lead and copper rule that sets limits and prescribes sampling procedures for lead and copper in drinking water. The city of Kingman's been monitoring lead and copper concentrations in homes since 1991 without any exceedance of regulatory action levels. In 2021, EPA came out with the lead and copper rule revisions. This required a service line material inventory, which was due by This required a service line material inventory, which was due by October sixteenth. That has been completed. It requires the inventory to be updated every year. It requires an annual notification of water service lines of unknown material. That went out last week. It also updates some sampling procedures. And then in twenty twenty-four, EPA enacted the Lead and Copper Rule Improvements Act or Rule, which requires lead service lines to be replaced if found within ten years. So this is the result of our inventory. We have a total of twenty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-two service lines. Of those, eleven thousand, one hundred and fifty-three are unknown. Those are both customer and utility side. On the customer side, it's ten thousand and seventy-seven. So that's the number of notices that went out last week. They were mailed, they're also hand-delivered to some of the older apartment complexes, trailer parks, and some of those mass meter, those multi-meter locations. So again, they were sent out by November fifteenth. Over the next three years, field verifications will take place to identify those unknown material service lines. And following DQ guidelines, it may be possible that not all of those will actually have to be physically inspected through statistical sampling and interpolation. If we're able to identify enough of a similar, you know, era of home, we may be able to classify the others as non-lead also. So this is just the perspective map here. So this is housing built before lead pipes were banned, and nationwide, that was in nineteen eighty-eight. Several states did ban lead as approved pipe material earlier than that. In Arizona, it was nineteen eighty-eight. So the vast concentration of those are, as you can see, you know, in the Midwest and the Northeast. It was not that common of a building material in the West. We did get some follow-up information from ADQ. So out of the other water providers in Arizona, eighty percent of them did complete their inventory, that's nine hundred and fifty systems. Two point three million service lines were identified. And statewide, there were five lead service lines found, and those were all at a, an older federal facility down in Yuma. So this is what the notification looks like. So it outlines the lead and copper rule. It kind of directs people to the Consumer Confidence Report, which is on the city website. There'll be a separate page on, there is a separate page now on the website that deals with this specifically. And so it gives the background on lead service lines, you know, the city side, the homeowner side. And there's been a lot of different interpretations, you know, the development style out West is different than the traditional development style back East. Where back East, it's generally the city maintains responsibility and ownership of the service line all the way into the home because most of the meters come in at the basement. So it's a little bit easier back there, if you can check it, you know, in the basement, the pipe material coming in and the pipe material coming out, you know, both sides of the meter, that's a little bit easier than typical construction development patterns in Arizona or out West. So this part talks about the sources of lead in drinking water. It's typically through plumbing materials that contain lead. This offers some tips on how to reduce lead in your drinking water, again, run your water, use cold water for drinking and cooking. You know, if you have a water filter, water filter, make sure it's properly installed and cleaning your aerators. And it talks about the health effects of lead, which are primarily learning and behavior disabilities, particularly in children. So here we offer, we've set up a telephone number that ranks to several of us out of Public Works and an email address that several of us get. As of this morning, we have been contacted by two people. We'll follow up with them, give them the information we have, see what other questions they have. We've also included a link on the city website, the page, the lead webpage, that goes directly to EPA and has a lot of very good information on lead in drinking water and, you know, so we're able to direct those. So that's kind of our report. If you have any questions, I can try to address them. You know, this is a, this was a national mandate. It kind of came out of some of the terrible situations that happened back East. But again, it's, you know, we don't believe we have a lead problem here. We believe that in this next three-year period, we'll be able to verify it. It's just that we have to be able to prove it, and we'll go through this field verification process to do that. So I can try to answer any questions in my half.
Thank you, Rob. Any questions? Councilor Ward?
Rob, is it just for lead pipes? Or is that copper pipes with soldered connections?
It's prob, you know, it's primarily lead pipes. It's also galvanized. If it's a galvanized pipe that's downstream from a lead pipe, then that may require replacements too, but it's primarily lead pipes.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
All right, Department reports, seven B, the Route sixty-six fest. Josh Noble. Welcome.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor, if I may approach?
Of course.
Thank you. Just some sample pieces from our event this year. I'm gonna try to go through this a little bit quicker as I know everybody's tired, but all the information is in there, and of course, if you have any questions, I'm happy to stay longer for any questions. So the festival encompasses a lot of different things to celebrate Route sixty-six and bring things to the community that are fun and exciting, bands, entertainment, local craft beer gardens. So we really tried to work with bringing our downtown breweries in, bringing in local, the meadery, the distillery, to really bring a flavor of Kingman, and also honor the request of council to work with our downtown businesses in trying to promote downtown as much as we could. Also, the classic car show, this time we did the car show both days. Last year, we did a motorcycle show, we had some logistics issues and then some other concerns with some of the motorcycle participants. So we've kind of switched over to the car show, it was pretty well received, we had car show participants show up both days. Vintage trailer show again, pin-up contests, roller skating on sixty-six, art displays and live demonstrations, fun activity zones, and the Route sixty-six photo wall. This is coordinated by ten community members from tourism, Parks and Rec, Public Works, risk management, and a volunteer. Actually, missed out on a few of our volunteers that help out with the camper show. So there's a few more people than what we have listed in here, but it's primarily tourism, Public Works, Parks and Rec, and then we have some volunteers that really help us to put this event on. So it takes quite a team to make this happen. We spent about ninety-three thousand dollars to put the event on. A lot of that is in the bands and entertainment, all the fun zones, the different things that make it exciting. And then revenues, of course, we don't make it all back, but we do make about eight thousand in vendor sales, then ninety-three hundred in beer sales, wristbands, those are for doing the different activity zones, eighty-two hundred in retail. We'll say some of that retail will continue to make sales in the gift shop. We've got shirts, magnets, stickers that are left over from the festival, and we sell those throughout the year at the gift shop, and they shall sell pretty well. We worked with several of the partnering organizations this year, including the Arizona Route sixty-six Association. They help, they've got one of their members on our committee, they help with setup. They also provide an information booth on things to do on Route sixty-six in Arizona. Kingman Main Street did provide the servers for our beer tent, as they've done in the past. The Ferris Car Club manages the car show, we're really thankful for them and all of the coordination, having people out on the ground so that we don't have, you know, a real mess of cars coming in and going out. It keeps things really well organized. Wallopai Thrive is an MCC Economic Development Extension for the Wallopai. They worked with us in getting vendors out there, having performances. And then the Arizona Office of Tourism, we collaborated with them to bring an international press trip to the festival. They were going across Route sixty-six in Arizona, and we kicked it off at the festival in Kingman. Some marketing highlights, we did do marketing in print, digital, social media, all across the board. We had a couple digital billboards in the Phoenix area that we thought were kind of strategically placed for travelers that might be coming up this way. Almost three and a half million impressions between those billboards. Also, a lot of meta-marketing, almost quarter million impressions, eighty-three thousand reach, eighty-six hundred lick links. I think one of the things in town that works really well for us are the bermashave-style banners that we put out on Andy Devine and on Stockton Hill Road. And then we got quite a few people going to our website via QR codes to learn about the scheduled events and what things are going on. Participation, we had this year twenty pin-up contests. Last year, in the first year, we had twelve, we expanded it because it was a really popular thing, and we also wanted to make more spaces available for locals. So a lot of those extra spaces that we added in were dedicated for local participants to be in the pin-up contest. Hundred car shows, registrants, or people that were registered, we had a lot of people show up that were not registered, I don't have a full count of the number of cars that were out there, but those are the numbers that pre-registered. Fitch campers, we were about the same this year, though we had some new and very unique pieces that were at the show this year, a lot of people really enjoyed going out and see those. Wristband sales, we had over a hundred, about twenty percent increase in wristband sales, so that was really good to, people were really coming out and they're wanting to, you know, participate in the festival, and that helps generate some revenue. Beer sales were down, so there's going to be two reasons that happened. One, we were only bringing in craft beers, we didn't bring any of the regular, you know, big names out, and some people don't want to drink craft beer, they only want your regular American beers, so that's one reason. But the other reason is we had Desert Diamond Distillery, there is a vendor, we had the meadery, there is a vendor, so there were other options for people to choose from. So we didn't have as many sales in our space, but that's why, because we were really partnering with our distillery, our breweries, and the meadery to try to highlight more of the things that are local flavors in Kingman. And then vendors, we had fifty-three this year versus forty-seven last year. We really tried to move things around to make the vendors more in line with people coming in. Vendors were really happy with the layout, and I think we've, several vendors said that they sold out, and we, you know, think we're gonna have really good attendance with vendors again in the future. So traveling to the festival, I neglected to put the full cellular data, but it was about seven point, or six point nine thousand people that came to the event, about seven point nine thousand visits total, because there's some people that came both days. Sixteen point four percent of those were from outside of the community, which is about eleven, eleven hundred people. They came from eleven different states. The hotel occupancy for that weekend compared to other weekends around it was about eight point four percent increase. So that's about a hundred and twenty-three extra hotel rooms, that doesn't include your short-term rentals, such as Airbnb, Verbo, that sort of thing. So there's probably some more people that came in. Also, the cellular data does not capture our international traffic. And I know I heard from some of the people talking in that they talked to people from Australia, from Italy, from different areas, so when you're looking at those numbers, that's not including any of the visitors that were international that happened to come to the festival. And that's all that I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council? Any questions? Comments?
Good job.
Thank you.
Councilor Eric?
I love that you're highlighting our local flavors.
Thank you. That was direction from mayor and council, so.
I did attend this year, and it was the first year I was in town to be able to attend, and I was so pleasantly surprised at the attendance. People were having a great time, they had brought their family out, and then, you know, you had something pretty much for everybody, so I really appreciated that, and I, I love that shield, that sixty-six shield, I think that's fantastic.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We were glad that we were able to work with the manufacturer to have that unveiled at the event. We think it makes a really special thing for the community, and I'll relay to the team and everyone on the committee your feedback.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Does the rabbit have a name? Is that our mascot?
Louis.
Louis the Rabbit, is that a mascot?
Um, so we named him after Louis Kingman. But we chose him for a number of reasons, because the Kingman Army Airfield had Bugs Bunny as a mascot in World War II. We've got the running hair, so that really kind of ties into our local fauna, and it's just something that we can tie in, and kids love him, so.
Louis the hare?
Jack Rabbit.
Jack Rabbit?
Yep.
Will Louis the Jack Rabbit be there next year?
He'll be there next year, and I have a strong feeling he will be at the very merry street of lights as well.
Awesome, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
All right, item eight, announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager. We'll start with you, Manager Walsh.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a couple announcements. We have the, the big one, the Rancho, Rancho Santa Fe Interchange groundbreaking will be on December second at two o'clock. We were out there scoping it out today, it'll be a great location. Public Works is working on clearing it, Parks and Rec and economic development and tourism are working on getting all the seating and the stage and all that set, so it'll be a great event on the, on the second. Another fun event, the Christmas tree lighting at Locomotive Park will be December seventh at six PM. And then, in the Christmas spirit, we have our angel tree out here in the lobby. That is for the, it's the senior angel tree, sorry, so for, for senior residents, opportunity to provide gifts for them. We also have the Toys for Tots box out in the lobby, so thank you.
All right, great. Councilor Walker?
Nothing tonight.
Councilor Savage?
Well, I'll let you say everything, because you were. Well, most of the council was available for the Veterans Day Parade. Yes, sir. Sorry. Yeah, great attendance for the Veterans Day Parade, we had her float. Cherish, I, Sammy, Sam, or Smiley, sorry, Eric and the mayor were there for that, so that was good. We also got back from Mesa, from the airport there at Falcon Field, and Cherish and I, and Doug, and Rob, and Jack. I'm having a brain fart, I didn't have enough chocolate. Anyways, we got to see the new hangars that were built down there, and they are absolutely gorgeous, so we're probably gonna have something coming to the council here soon about more development now at the airport for storage and renters, but the facility, it was, it was amazing, it was top-notch, state-of-the-art. Okay.
All right. Councilor Ward? Councilor Staley?
I just wanted to let people know that on December seventh, at three-ten Beale, the park, Locomotive Park, there is a car club that's doing a wreath laying in commemoration of Pearl Harbor. That's at ten, if I didn't say that.
Councilor Eric?
Nothing to report.
All right, I just wanted to make an announcement that the Christmas tree lighting on Radar Hill is, the Chamber of Commerce does that, and the event takes place from three to six thirty at the Heritage Complex over, across from the post office at seven-ten Stockton Hill Road, and that is on November twenty-ninth. We also have several events for the holidays coming up with Parks and Rec, so Santa's Calling, Letters to Santa, and a Jingle All the Way Breakfast with Santa. So contact Parks and Rec for all the details on that, because they've, they're gonna be having a lot of fun the holiday season, so. All right, with that, council requests for future reports and updates. Councilor Walker? Councilor Savage? Councilor Ward? Councilor Staley?
At the town hall, there was mention of a program that Bullhead uses every year to bring in affordable apartments to their community, and I would like to get a report on specifics, what that program is, what it would take for us to implement it, possible costs, and outcomes, and timelines. Thank you.
Perfect. Councilor Eric?
Yes, I would also like a report on, yesterday during our MUC meeting, we were talking, they were talking about the sewer payback program and how it's kind of left up in the air with whether someone septic fails or not. I would like a, not just a report on the sewer payback program, but also on the street payback program, and see how many people have actually recouped some of the money they spent and actually got paid back.
Okay.
So on sewer and street.
Okay. All right. Okay, all right, um, Executive Session, item number ten. A City Manager Quarterly Evaluation, the City Council may go into Executive Session pursuant to ARS thirty-eight dash four-three-one-point-zero-one-A-one to discuss, or zero-three-A-one, to discuss the City Manager's Quarterly Evaluation in accordance with the contract with the City Manager. During the first year of employment, the council will evaluate the City Manager's performance on a quarterly basis. May I have a motion to go into Executive Session?
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, we're going into Executive Session. All right, we're going into executive session.